Good evening. I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting of November 9th to order at 6:00 PM. Are there any objections? Seeing none, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Henigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Please rise if you are able. At this council meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values, give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us, and above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to do a quick audio check. Ginger, is our sound working?
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear.
Jay, is our sound working?
I can hear you upstairs.
Oh, Jay's talking and he's not, is he muted?
Can you hear me now?
All right. Eric, is our sound working?
The sound is working.
No.
Okay. It's not, y'all can't hear us then. We can hear you.
Oh.
I can.
Hold on.
I can.
Okay. Now I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, okay.
Can you hear me?
All right. With that, we have a, we have public comments. I'm gonna, Ginger, I'm gonna start with the people that are here. Kurt Murray, you have three minutes.
Point of information, Lynn, can we make sure the audio is working so that the public comments can be heard by the people on Zoom?
Yes. Good talk. And actually, everyone on council, make sure you're not muted unless you mean to be. Can you do me a favor before your time starts and just speak into the microphone, Mr. Murray?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kurt Murray.
Okay, hold on one second. Can y'all, can y'all hear that?
I can hear it, Mayor.
Richard's nodding yes.
Richard's nodding yes. Okay. So you're, Ginger, his three minutes begins now.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the Dunwoody City Council, my name is Kurt Murray. I am a resident of 1240 Dunwoody Knoll Drive here in the great city of Dunwoody and have been so for the past 19 years. I am here tonight to continue my objection to the rezoning efforts of 2028, which is the 503, 518, 528 Roberts Drive rezoning project. This has been an R-50 request with multiple variances, and we're still, as a neighborhood, opposed to this and the current form. However, we are not opposed to the city of Dunwoody growing. We are opposed to this project as it is planned. My comments have been well documented and emailed to members of the city council tonight. I am here again speaking in opposition to this project, bringing up two other points of note. The surrounding of this property is going to be a large fence, which is going to further restrict the movement of nighttime animals through the Dunwoody area. This is right across the street from Dunwoody Nature Center. Already this week, we have had two deer that have been hit on Roberts Drive, and I'm sure as Chief Grogan can attest, nobody drives a speed limit on Roberts Drive. So further putting up this fence along this property is going to restrict the movement of deer, and therefore, we're going to have an increased likelihood of deer impact as well. Another part that the developer has proposed is the reduction of-
Could you speak up and a little closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
One of the topics that the developer has put forth is the number of people driving during the time by having an age restriction process. I would like you to consider the alternate of this part here is that if you have reduced number of, sorry, if you have, if you eliminate the number of age restrictions on this here, then you could have the potential for 14 families with elementary school-aged children who are right across the street from Austin Elementary who can walk to school for the six years of kindergarten through fifth grade. So therefore, you have moms who have the ability to walk their kids to and from school each and every day and not having to get in the carpool line. My kids went through Austin, Peachtree, and Dunwoody, and my wife thoroughly enjoyed her time at walking the kids to school during their time at Austin Elementary. So I would also say that age restricting this property is not appropriate thing. If the council decides to move through with R-50 zoning, please consider eliminating the age 55 restrictions so that further kids-
There are 30 seconds remaining.
-are walking to Austin Elementary and availing themselves of events and activities at Dunwoody Nature Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim. Okay. If you'll just say your last name for the record, please.
Sure. It's Tim Belletowski.
Uh huh. Okay. You have three minutes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Tim Belletowski. I'm a resident of 5033 Trail Ridge Way in Dunwoody. My property backs up to Dunwoody United Methodist Church. I've lived there for about 10 years or so. The reason I'm up here speaking today is with regard to the village overlay and the buffer, which I'm very much appreciative of council's action with regard to Dunwoody Village and the shops at Dunwoody Village maintaining that buffer zone. One area of concern for myself and the other neighbors who do back up to Dunwoody United Methodist Church is that we see that that is now slated to be a residential R-30 buffer. My concern with that is that pending the use of some of that property that is currently woods and parking lot that could potentially be turned into a parking deck or some other significant type of structure that would not be consistent with residential activity. And with an R-30 buffer zone, it's probably from Mayor where you're sitting to where my son is sitting behind me about 10 feet. And what I'm asking council to consider is to having some type of uniformity between the zoning that is put in place for the shops at Dunwoody Village and that same buffer and those same woods that impact myself and the neighbors who are adjacent to me. Additionally, when I moved into the property 10 years ago, there had been previously an agreement with Dunwoody United Methodist Church and the owners of the houses that back up to their property. That agreement essentially said that there would be a 150-foot buffer zone between where those trees are at and the houses in return for being able to pay the parking lot that is currently there. My ask of council would be to keep that agreement essentially in place so that Dunwoody United Methodist Church is treated similarly how you might treat the village overlay while still allowing them to keep their residential aspects of building a church and all those kinds of things. And then additionally, for neighbors who don't have the 150-foot buffer would be to request that council keeps the R-30 zoning, which I believe is the undisturbed 30-foot zoning. And I ask you would consider that before making a final recommendation on what-
There are 30 seconds remaining.
-in the future, this issue has been clearly addressed and doesn't come up for additional conversation five, 10, however many years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Grant, would you like to speak?
Thank you. My name is Grant Belletowski.
Lean into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Grant Belletowski. I am a resident at 5033 Trail Ridge Way. My concern is the fact that the church, like my dad said, is building a parking net that can potentially be a noise throughout the day for our house and neighbors around the block. Also, I am concerned of the dog park, the doggy daycare right behind us that is constantly making noise all day. It is very distracting for my sister and I and as we work from home virtually. Also, I would like to make a point that, again, with Roberts Drive, if we block off the fences, then that will restrict animals or maybe mating grounds or meeting, which can then decrease trees pollination and animal populations. My last concern is that if the Donnie, if Donnie and I message this church, go a deck, it will also add pollution as there would be more cars in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Warford.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Robert Warford. In May of 1973, I graduated from Shalford Elementary School along with Sally Quillian. In September that same year, we both began five years at Dunwoody High School. In fact, Sally Quillian and I were in the same DHS graduating class of 1978. Sally went on to law school at Georgia, at UGA. I continued working at Georgetown Kroger and attended college part-time at the DeKalb Community College campus of Georgia State University. During high school, I distinctly remember the day a school bus pulled up to our school and dropped off the very first black students that I had ever seen in our pearly-white Dunwoody community. Until that day, I had never attended a grade school or high school with any person of color. Up to then, the only person of color I had ever seen in school were the janitors and some of the cafeteria workers. Back then, I was young and naive. I wondered, why were these black students, why did these black students have to take the bus all the way from Lithonia, Georgia to our well-funded learning institution in Dunwoody? I did not yet understand the institutions of racism in America. Folks, I am no longer young nor naive. I have come to realize that what I am is the very face of white privilege. On July 6, 2016, a black man by the name of Charles Lade circulated a video that showed a controversial police killing of Alton Sterling in Louisiana the day before. He wanted to draw attention to that police killing. By doing so, he helped launch a wave of nationwide Black Lives Matter protests. The day after Lade posted the video, he was detained and his job on Dobbin's Air Force Base in Marietta by military police officers. According to the Dunwoody News reporter, the only warrant for Chris Lade was a two-year-old bench warrant that had been issued when he failed to appear in court on traffic-related incidents in Dunwoody. These kinds of citations and bench warrants clearly do not justify the arrest of any citizen at their place of employment. In this case, the Dunwoody Police Department should have known better. The real problem is that they did, the real problem is they may, maybe they did. Chris Lade has stated that he believes his arrest was retaliation for posting controversial video. Police should not be arresting anyone on inaccurate information and arrest for any reason, and especially arrest at one's place of employment will likely cause irreparable harm to a citizen even before they get their day in court. This kind of cowardly police conduct is unacceptable. Chief Grogan's leadership failures have now led to-
30 seconds remaining.
...disrupting the relationship between Dunwoody citizens and our local officials. I recently called on local leaders to help open up dialogue in our community on the issue of DPD leadership. The answer I got from City Hall was, and I quote, "Because ongoing litigation, this kind of undertaking would be difficult. Upon resolution of litigation, we can have more public discussion." That answer is unacceptable. I call on Chief Grogan to resign. I call on this Dunwoody City Council and the city mayor to tender to recognize the nation of police chief Billy Grogan for it. Good night, and as always, good luck.
Do you want me to call 30 seconds? Kathy Ziger, 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 sorry. You know what? I gotta do it one more time because I was muted on Zoom. Kathy Ziger, thanks, Ziger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Doish, members of the council. I'm Kathy Ziger with Smith, Gamble, and Russell, and I represent the Hudgens family who owns the shops of Dunwoody. My client continues to object to the 150-foot buffer along the western property line and respectfully submits that the change that you made to your ordinance after the last draft does nothing to change that. But what is even more disturbing at this point is of the failure of the city to have the basic courtesy of meeting with my client in the interest of trying amicably to resolve this objection. We offered to do so and understood one of the reasons you deferred last time was to allow that meeting to take place. The shops of Dunwoody has been a great corporate citizen of this city since 1977. It has improved the tax base. It continues to do so, and there is simply no justification for the city's failure even to meet. Therefore, I am here to request a deferral until such a meeting might occur. If this past week has taught us nothing, it's that we need to be working together to resolve differences. There is absolutely no city or elected official who should ever refuse to discuss a city issue that impacts a citizen, whether it's an individual or whether it's a corporate entity. That kind of policy flies in the face of an essential tenet of democracy. We get to approach our government. We get to have conversations with our government, and at this day and time, as if not all else, we could do with a few less failures of this process. So I respectfully request that you defer this matter until we can sit down. Our entire goal is to try and work through this so that litigation is avoided, so that we might reach an amicable resolution of what is the dispute. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia? I'm gonna get this wrong. Okay. But would you repeat your name, please, when you get to the microphone?
Thank you for your time.
One second. Can you introduce yourself, but also pull the microphone as close as you can to yourself? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I'm extremely confused about a few things. The map and the key do not match the words that are written in the plan. My name is Felicia Volotion. I live at 1205 Hidden Ridge Lane, which is directly behind Publix. It's a little difficult sometimes to explain what exactly it is, so I brought something to help me. I and my neighbor sit closest to the commercial property line of anyone, yet everyone has in writing 130-feet undisturbed buffer and 20-foot transitional yard. The agreement that was written originally when those two houses were built between Dunwoody Homeowners Association, Regency, and the two properties, which was also part of the 99 zoning, if I am correct, put in certain protections for our two houses, 1205 and 1206, because of the close proximity. So we are not asking for anything more than exists now. I had passed this out back in March, but I'm gonna do so again. We pulled bullet points out of that agreement, and the agreement is included in here, that we would like to be put in the final plan that is passed. It's not 50 feet between us and the commercial property. It varies, and that's why that agreement said between 100, between 50 and 150 feet in various places. And I'm gonna show you my house in a minute. It's because of where we're situated, everybody else is measured from one side, but my south side is not covered in this agreement properly, and my neighbor's west side is not either. So let me just show you what would happen in the agreement if the 50-foot that applies to my house was taken away. So currently, this is what it looks like. The wood represents Publix, the small wood over here. So the fence that exists on my house and this fence that was put in the agreement, which is not in the agreement now, as is proposed, is 50 feet. So you see, there's all those trees and all these trees that are covering from the existing commercial property. You ask what happens?
Time.
When the buildings get taller and the trees, it's only 50 feet is covered. And on this side, the measurement is 130 and 20. So right here, all this shit's taken out. Okay. Now look at this. This is not acceptable. Those properties had an agreement in the 99 agreement that was to protect us from this. So I would respectfully request, why is this not addressed? I keep coming. I've talked to Richard many times. He's even come to my house. Well, why? I just don't understand. So I'm gonna hand this out again, and I'd like to ask if I could call each of you next week if it doesn't get voted on tonight and try to explain. It's just a few bullet points that we really wanted to make sure that the fence stays and to make sure that we're properly buffered.
Of course. Brittany will take it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Ginger, Ginger, I believe we have someone online?
Yes. Are you able to hear me?
Okay. No, I'm muted. It's me. I'm sorry. Ginger, can you hear me now?
Can you hear me?
No.
In the meeting at all? Okay.
Okay. So it's Valerie. It's, oh, can you unmute Valerie? No.
I'm in a Zoom meeting right now.
Okay. So we're just gonna pause while we, and to be clear to anyone who can hear us, they did a big run-through again today in the afternoon, and it all worked perfectly.
Can you hear me now?
Are we trying again?
Yes. Can you hear me talking now?
Counsel, can we go ahead with the proclamation since that doesn't involve anything on Zoom and then come back to fin- Oh, wait. No, it does. Chair. Proclamation. Oh, actually. Diabetes Awareness Month in November 14, 2020 is World Diabetes Day in Dunwoody, Georgia. Whereas diabetes is a leading cause of death in Georgia, is an incurable disease in which the body does not produce or properly use insulin, a vital hormone in the conversion of sugar, starches, and other food into energy, and whereas type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, a hormone that enables people to produce energy from food. It occurs when the body's immune system attacks and destroys the insulin-producing cells in the pancreas called beta cells. Its onset has nothing to do with diet or lifestyle. There is no prevention for type 1 diabetes, and at present, no cure. And whereas type 1 diabetes strikes both children and adults at any age, it comes on suddenly, causing dependence on artificial insulin for life and carries a constant threat of devastating complications up to and including death. And whereas more than 9,000 children and a currently unknown number of adults in Georgia live with type 1 diabetes, and whereas each year in Georgia, there are approximately 500 children diagnosed with type 1 diabetes, and whereas an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before suffering the devastating complications of the disease, and whereas the ultimate goal is to find a cure for diabetes so that people can live fulfilling lives. Now, therefore, be it resolved by me, Mayor of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, that the members of this body proclaim November 14, 2020, as World Diabetes in Dunwoody, Georgia, and witness whereof I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia to be affixed. And so I'm gonna present this award to local Dunwoody residents Helane Solomon and Brady Solomon, and I want to just speak a little bit because I have known Brady since he was little bitty and Helane for lots of years, too. And so I wanted to, it's so nice to see Brady all grown up. I spent a lot of years seeing him in his stroller, walking to Chestnut. Those were the good old days. So it's my honor, and I'm gonna come down and make the presentation, and then Helane has a few words to say.
Hi. Thank you again for having us tonight. It really means a lot to us. I'm Helane Solomon, a Dunwoody resident. And like Lynn said, this is my son Brady, and we are really honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of JDRF, Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. JDRF is leading the fight against type 1 diabetes or T1D by funding research, advocating for policies that accelerate access to new therapies, and providing a support network for millions of people around the world who are impacted by T1D. JDRF has been responsible for every major breakthrough in treatment and technology in the past five decades, and we are very grateful to the city of Dunwoody for spreading awareness of this disease. Our son Brady was diagnosed just two years ago, and since that day, our family really has learned so much. And although the signs of diabetes can begin to show early, sometimes it does take a person a while to recognize the symptoms. And so I just wanted to very quickly review the signs and symptoms. Frequent urination, increased thirst, dry mouth, itchier dry skin, increased appetite, unexplained weight loss. And really, diagnosis is so critical so that patients can begin to monitor their blood sugar and administer insulin. And just more personally, for Brady, he wears a device called a Dexcom, and it continually monitors his blood sugar. So he, on his phone, and my husband and I, can always check Brady's blood sugar, no matter where he is, if he's at school or playing sports or whatever. And he also wears an insulin pump, which delivers insulin to him automatically without taking a shot, because before, every time he would eat, he would take a shot, and now he just enters the numbers. Brady can eat anything he wants. He just uses and takes the insulin before he eats. So again, thank you so much for having us and bringing awareness to diabetes and acknowledging- So again, thank you so much for having us and bringing awareness to diabetes, and acknowledging Diabetes Awareness Month, and we really are grateful, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. We're going to test it again.
Testing, can you...
How are we testing this? I forgot not to ask.
Testing, one, two, testing.
No, but I was talking, maybe...
Testing, one, two, testing, testing.
No.
Okay.
Testing.
Ah, yay! Yes. Ginger, say it again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So... We're going to go to the people who had signed up on Zoom through the city earlier for public comment. Hold on, I'm sorry. Let's see if this will work. Ginger, can you get Valerie?
Yes.
Okay. That was a little loud, actually, we won't complain.
Okay. Valerie should be able to unmute and speak.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, I'm Valerie Biggerstaff. I'm the historian and curator for Dunwoody Preservation Trust. Regarding the Dunwoody Village Master Plan, I would like to emphasize the importance of not taking green space from the Historic Cheeks Rule property. This property and home, which was saved from development by the community 25 years ago, is the location of celebrations such as Light Up Dunwoody, and also a place for people to gather at the end of events such as the Fourth of July Parade and during the Arts Festival. Taking land away from the property would leave little room for such celebrations. The Cheeks Rule Farmhouse is not only central to the City of Dunwoody, it is central to our history. I would also like to remind everyone of the significance of the Historic Railroad Section House, just down the road on Shamley-Dunwoody. The Railroad Section House is the last and only reminder in Dunwoody of the Roswell Railroad, which went from Shamley through Dunwoody and on to Roswell from 1881 until 1921. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim McGeorge?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for your time and your service. My name is Kim McGeorge, and I live at 5025 Trail Ridge Way, and I'm here to talk about the Dunwoody Village overlay. My property backs up to Dunwoody Methodist Church, specifically, right, the Boy Scout Hut is right behind our house. I would like to second what Tim Felvatoski has shared with you, that I think that there should be a consistent 150-foot buffer between our property and the church, I don't see no reason for that to change. So that is, that's my input, that's my share, and thank you for the evening.
Thank you. John Callaway, please.
Thank you very much, I'm here to speak briefly about the Roberts Road rezoning. I left here, I left here two weeks ago feeling somewhat optimistic. You had given the applicant a couple of weeks to eliminate some lots and make the, make the project softer on surrounding neighborhoods, did he? Did it help? No. The current ratio is R50, the Dunwoody Homeowners Association is not in support of this application. They want R75, or about nine lots, has the applicant complied? No. I asked for a buffer to be left in the back corner of the property to protect my property, did he agree to that? No. The Dunwoody Knoll community has asked the applicant to engage them on reducing flooding from the project, did he do that? No. Four weeks ago, you asked the applicant to enter a dialogue with all of us surrounding neighbors who were upset. Did they follow through and talk to us? No. We all know that the reason the applicant won't reduce the numbers of lots is the profit motive, the more lots means more profits. This plan was not created with a community in mind, or with community input. It was created in an office where someone took a map and stuck as many lots on it as possible. Then they calculated sales and profits, and then offered what big profits they could to the sellers. It was only then that the applicant went out to the community with this plan, and they basically have been trying to sell it ever since. Isn't that the opposite of how we want to encourage people in Dunwoody, Georgia, to approach a new growth adjoining existing neighborhoods? Projects that impact established Dunwoody neighborhoods should begin, not end, with community input. You know, if you deny this application, this property is not going anywhere. This opportunity will still be there. If we could have the two-year obligatory hiatus, and just take a breath of air here, I believe a developer will come in who is willing to listen to the neighborhoods, and I'm hoping that Mr. McLeod's office will be sure to tell him that the way to success here is to talk to the neighboring property owners first, not later. I would personally like that to happen, because I would be the first one to go out there and engage with them, just like I did Kurt Swilly on the first application. So I suggest, I would request that you deny it, if you do approve this, and I hope you do not. It's humiliating for me to keep asking you of this, but I wish you would do so with the condition that in the corner, there's a 35-foot buffer behind my property line. I would ask, I would negotiate and ask the applicant himself to do that, but he won't talk to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ginger, I think we have a few minutes left, if there's anyone in the Zoom room that would like to speak.
Yes, I have Willie Letson. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Mayor and counsel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Over the past several months, residents of Dunwoody Knoll have voiced their consistent opposition to the proposed development on Roberts Drive because of density, traffic, school, and drainage impacts. There's no opposition to all the development there, but there is opposition to this current plan. I'm just going to highlight a few reasons for the current opposition. The applicant states that the proposed development is a transition, but by choosing R50, he chose the least restricted possibility. R75 or higher is a better choice, and would garner support from many in Dunwoody Knoll community. The DHA, as Mr. Callaway just said, recently stated its opposition to the proposed development because of density concerns, and suggested R75 was also a better compromise. DHA's statement makes it clear that this development is a concern to many in the community, and not just those in adjacent neighborhoods. Second, a month ago, similar to Mr. Callaway, council encouraged the applicant to meet with Dunwoody Knoll and other neighborhoods in an effort to come with a mutual agreement. Applicant made no meaningful changes to its plan following a nearly two-hour meeting facilitated by council members. Despite the efforts by Dunwoody Knoll residents to clarify meeting notes and request further consideration, there has been no response or further communication from the applicant in the three-plus weeks since. Third, the applicant is still requesting variances that allow up to 70% impermeable surface lot coverage. That's great, it's less than it was before, but it's still 175% of the currently permissible lot coverage, and higher than permitted under the city code for even industrial development, which is only 60%, by the way, under section 2758. Residential coverage should be, and is much less per the code. Interestingly, subsection A of that code states that these regulations offer certainty for property owners, developers, and neighbors about the limits of what is allowed. At the last council meeting, there was a discussion about measuring the impermeable surface over the entirety of the property. Unfortunately for the applicant, the code is clear that the impermeable surface must be measured per lot and not per development. Again, these are issues that he's created, and less density and larger lots would avoid the issues and several of the other concerns that have been expressed by the other neighbors. Fourth, approval by city council is a vote for a development that is impermissible under the current city code. The applicant has stated that it requires all four of the variances for this plan to go through. Given the variances are doomed from the start, as evidenced previously by Ms. Harris's comments, the findings in the staff's ZBA memos, and the staff's comments to city council, the plan can't be built as proposed. Failure to deny the application risks leaving the property rezoned without a plan. A new applicant could, would be able to come in...
30 seconds remaining.
...and be able to build a R50 development, and not be subject to the same scrutiny by council and neighbors. Knowing the plan cannot be built as submitted, council would be not performing its civic duty if it does not deny this application. Last, a city council job should not be to maximize a profit for the developer. In conclusion, the proposed development raises concerns but offers no benefit to the surrounding neighbors, they're simply trying to do too much here. We urge you to deny this application. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ginger, is anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
That ends public comment, there will be another session of public comment at the end of the meeting. Next up, we have our presentation of the third quarter internal audit report. Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Mayor. The third quarter internal audit report, as usual, I have reviewed this this afternoon with the audit committee that the mayor and city council has appointed as an advisory committee to you. I'll summarize the comments here in five or 10 minutes. We reviewed this material for about 45 minutes this afternoon. The things I'm going to talk about include continuous monitoring, my third quarter report, an update on prior recommendations, where I am on the plan for 2020, and my suggestions for the plan for 2021. From a continuous monitoring standpoint, I reviewed the financial report prepared by Linda Neighbors, and also reviewed her memo to the mayor and city council. And the audit summary is that I found the explanations reasonable, although we all know it's because of COVID, number of revenues are down, number of expenses are up, but what we're talking about here is proper financial reporting, and the, and I do see that. So in my audit summary is that I identified no expenditures that were not within the charter, the budget, or the appropriate ordinances. For the third quarter... Do I have a question there?
No, no, just keep going, please. We'll do questions at the end.
My third quarter report had to do with C Click Fix, which is the system Public Works uses to identify, for citizens to identify things like potholes, roads, sidewalk issues, and also to look at IWork, which is the system used for code violations, such as tall grass, abandoned vehicles, those kinds of things. I reviewed the policies and found them fine. I discussed these programs with the directors of those departments. I reviewed about 25 entries into the system and their dispositions. And in fact, I submitted one of my own that I had, that I had seen as a test of the system. In connection with the work, I found the systems to be both transparent and responsive. I noted that there's a number of citizens that, that use these two vehicles to communicate. They use, there's a few people that use them a lot. And sometimes the citizens are not satisfied with the answer. But I, I would say that the answers are forthcoming, thought out, the more serious ones rise as high within the city as they need to. In my own case, which had to do with a drainage issue in front of the, near the Chevron Station on Shamley-Dunwoody, the, where the handicap accessible sidewalk meets the driveway, water accumulates in there after rainstorms, it may not dissipate for a couple of days, and just, it just struck me as odd that someone with a handicap would have to walk through the, through the water, or a wheelchair through the water. But anyhow, I was told that on that particular issue, that it's on the list of things to be fixed in the future, next time Shamley-Dunwoody is addressed. I found that to be a satisfactory answer, but I will say this, it did, all the responses were within the timeframe, and they followed up with me very nicely to see if I was satisfied with their answer, which I was. As to prior internal audit recommendations, there's, in my February 10th, 2020 report, I made a number of recommendations related to internal controls related to the Dunwoody Senior Baseball. A, not having a contract, and B, documentation of bank reconciliations were not provided to me. And, and in addition, recommended that money be set aside for the repair or replacement of the artificial turf some 10 years in. But what I've, what I found in that is that everyone at the city, as far as staff, the mayor, council members are working on this issue and bringing it to a conclusion. I'm satisfied with, with what's going on there, related to the new athletic field recommendations, which city council discussed at the September 29th meeting. Another prior recommendation has to do with hotline whistleblower line recommendation. Again, the city is working on that, has bids from various companies, that thing's headed to a proper conclusion. The internal audit plan for 2020, that's a lot longer list than you'd normally see, because there's things that were done, things that were not done, and were, then were replaced by other projects, just like everything else, the, in this COVID year, which internal audits could be done, should be done, got changed around, but there aren't any changes here tonight, I'm working off the plan that was revised the last time. So I'll just go to the third quarter, and it says the C Click Fix and IWork programs, that work has been completed. I did add, worked on the request for proposal related to external auditors, and in the, also then in the fourth quarter, doing the audit related to accounts payable dispersments and purchasing procedures, that's in process, as it should be here in the fourth quarter. Then as far as the plan for next year, I put down first quarter fraud risk assessment, second quarter review of the CAFER, third quarter looking at the Dunwoody not-for-profits, and fourth quarter purchasing cards and fuel cards. Other considerations, could do another cybersecurity review as I did a year or two ago, and that dealt with auditing the various auditors that the city already has in place, looking at cybersecurity. And then I'm open to input tonight, or anytime, from Dunwoody staff, the mayor, and city council, as to what, if there's something that should be in the plan that you don't see, or something you want, let's talk about it. So Madam Mayor, that, that would conclude my report, and as I said, this was all reviewed with the audit committee this afternoon, who is okay with everything I have in here.
Thank you. Um, questions? I will start it, John.
Thank you, Bill, for the comprehensive report. Looking at your paperwork that you provided, can you give us a quick update of what happened in the first quarter in the 2020 in the sense of the cash recommendation? It just is implemented in the second quarter. What does that mean? What did we do on that?
What was implemented, and then we go back here. What was implemented was fine. It was just moved to the second quarter. As the work was being done, it was more appropriate to do it in the second quarter based on the status of.
We reported out and that was appropriate. That was in good shape then, the cash handling.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. One other question, if I could, as far as the work for next year. Is there any thought, there's a number of CARES funding that the city is handling and there's policies and procedures and outlays of cash. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to add an audit to that or if you have availability to put that into your 2021. Or if appropriate, I just thought it was a conversation that we should think about. There's millions of dollars being spent on that, so I wondered if your opinion on that.
Yes, I should emphasize that a little bit more. Thank you, John. The, what I call Dunwoody Not-for-Profits in the third quarter, when we talked this afternoon in the audit committee, the CARES Act specifically came up and the money that was going there, and that's exactly what's going to be included at the third quarter. We could talk about timing if you think it needs to be done sooner.
I appreciate it. Thank you. You're, you're spot on. You're handling exactly what I think you should. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Joe.
Bill, thank you very much for the detail. Your help always, help as always. I was wondering on the, you did the C Click Fix and the I Work. Did you log a case with the I Work as well?
I did not submit anything on I Work. No, I did not.
I, and have we compared to other municipalities' best practices of how they engage with the citizen to have, say, a citizen portal, standard user interface where no matter what kind of issue they may have with the city, whether it's a pothole or it's a code enforcement or what have you. Are we comparing ourselves to best practices of how, how other cities can operate and how we could potentially enhance and have a single user interface for our citizens?
That was discussed with both departments. And each of them have good reasons in their mind, and, and I concur with, as to why they need to have these two separate systems. And they seem to think that the communications between them, the education of citizens of which system to use, they thought that at times it, it's, doesn't really serve any purpose to get back with the citizen related to why they should be using the other system, but they are transferring the information over. But I, I did not test as far as a, a best practice of other cities using one combined thing, but I'd be, I'd be glad to look further into that for you, Joe.
I appreciate that, Bill. And I would definitely love to see, you mentioned cyber as a potential for 2021. I think that's something that's on top of mind. I'd love to entertain doing it, putting that into our 2021 calendar if the rest of my council or mayor would anchor with that. That's all the questions or comments I had. Thank you.
All right.
Steve, anybody, anybody, anybody else? Okay, that's fine, Pam.
Thank you, Bill. Am I on? Yes. I had a quick question. Third quarter 2021 Dunwoody nonprofit, that's all our Dunwoody nonprofit partners, correct? You will look into all of them, for instance, rural nature center, DPT. Is that what that is or is it just the CARES?
It, it is to look at all of them, but that would be pretty comprehensive to do everyone in one year for everything. I saw it as a survey to get a good understanding at all of them and then maybe dig deeper into one or two. And at the same time, touch on the CARES Act.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else?
A quick compliment. Thanks for what you do, Bill. And I, I guess, Joe, I agree with cybersecurity. And I don't know, I guess the question is whether that's something that would be in Bill's scope or if that would be something better addressed with, you know, a separate professional who's more into the computer side. And I guess that's, you know, maybe some discussion with Bill, with city staff, you know, among Bill's city staff and, and us perhaps might be appropriate in that area. But I, I agree with the need there.
Eric, if you'll take a look into how best to audit cybersecurity, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Certainly, we certainly will. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm good. Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill, for all your work. We appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Good night. All right. The consent agenda. Does anyone have, I do, but does anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, Michael Starling, are you available?
Yes.
So I want to discuss the quick, quick claim deed on the property that Weland is developing on Parnishell.
Yes.
And I'm going to tell you my interpretation of what happened and you or someone else can confirm if I'm on the right track. Which is, first of all, we turned this property over to Weeland in 2018, correct?
That's correct.
But when we acquired the property in 2012, 2013, correct?
Yes.
The previous CFO believed that because we would sell that property, we would likely sell that property for a profit, that it was a taxable parcel. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
And so, well, so that is what happened there. So there's been some discussion in emails, council, of why we were paying property taxes on that property. We were. Now let's talk about what happened since 2018 where it shows that we are paying property taxes. Are we paying property taxes, taxes, or is Weeland paying us back for the property taxes?
No, ma'am. Weeland has paid the property taxes and they are receiving the bills from this year as well as from, from now on.
Okay, so in 18 and 19, is that correct? We were reimbursed?
That's correct. I, I, they paid one year.
Okay.
And I think actually they ended up paying both years.
Okay.
And then obviously this, the, the tax bill that's out now, they, they have.
All right, so Jay or Linda, the bills still appear online as though the city of Dunwoody is the owner of that property. So this is what we're correcting here?
The purchase, the, can you hear me first?
Yes.
Starting with the next one, the, the names of the bills should show up in Weeland's name instead of ours. Historically, they're always going to be in ours for those years. They paid those three years, 17, 18, and 19. And that's, that's where it stands now. This quick claim deed reflects the previous and the initial purchase and clears that part up so that the chain is correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions about anything else on the consent agenda? Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sharon, that was moved by Stacy, second by John. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Mayor, moving to the next item. Under business items, this will be an emergency ordinance. Item number nine. Emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia under section 1.03 of the Charter of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia, declaring local emergency of the novel coronavirus disease 2019 global pandemic, requiring the use of mask or face coverings in public during the COVID-19 outbreak and for other purposes. Mayor, this is the ordinance that we have, council has adopted month to month. This particular one will become effective at 12:00 PM on November the 30th and it will stand repealed at 12:00 PM on December the 30th unless reenacted.
Unless we pass number 10. All right, so council, does anybody have any questions on this? Seeing none.
Move to approve.
Moved by Joe, second.
Second.
Moved by Joe, Sharon, second by Pam. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the questions. Please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Sharon, that's, oh, anybody? Nay. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Item number 10 is a first read of an emergency ordinance. Emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia under section 1.03 of the Charter of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia, declaring local emergency of the novel coronavirus disease 2019 global pandemic, requiring the use of mask or face coverings in public during the COVID-19 outbreak and for other purposes. This is a first read. This is Bill Riley's item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This, this, what this does is it codifies these ordinances that we're passing from month to month. It still has the place markers where it becomes effective and when it becomes ineffective. And it has a sunset date that we hope that we won't need to reenact it again six months after.
Okay, any questions? So to be clear, Bill, the governor says that cities can have mask ordinances as long as the average cases are over 100. Is that correct? Average cases per two weeks, however they phrase that. And so if the case count falls below an average of 100, then effectively we can't enforce, correct?
That would be correct, Mayor.
They jump back up. And so just for the public's knowledge today, de cab is at like 205. So, but yes, okay. And so we'll vote on this in two weeks. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
The next, the next item is item number 11. It is RC 20-02 Peachland Housing Group seeks to resell the properties located at 5308, 5318, and 5328 Roberts Drive from their current R100 single dwelling residential district zoning classification to an R50 single dwelling residential district. John Olson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So this is the third meeting in review of the rezoning request at 5308, 5318, and 5328.
Hey, John, something is not working.
I'm sorry. Hold on.
It's your sound. It's not your, we can see it.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So this is the third meeting in regards to the rezoning request at 5308, 5318, and 5328 Roberts Drive. This, this property consists of three lots that have three single family properties. The total acreage is approximately 3.3 acres. So this was the plan that was presented at the last meeting. And again, this is a rezoning request from an R50 to, excuse me, an R100 to an R50 with 15 lots. There was discussion about the density and the lot coverage. And the applicant has updated some, some of the plans related to, to those issues. This is the updated plan that we got. As you can see, the lot, the number of lots has been reduced down from 15 to 14. And by doing so, they've created a little bit more open space. You can see within the cul-de-sac, there is some common area. Also with the reduction in, in that lot, they've been able to increase the, the lot size to just below 8,000 or an average around 8,000. And then the lot frontage is approximately 69 feet on average. So when we look at the density, this is the updated density chart that, that we got. The proposed plan was at 4.47 dwelling units per acre. With the reduction in the lot, they are now at 4.17 units per acre. This puts the density exactly in the middle between Fairfield, which is 6.19 dwelling units per acre, and Dunwoody Knoll, which is 2.13 dwelling units per acre. The density also remains lower than the neighboring Dunwoody Walk, which is 5.69 dwelling units per acre. And this neighborhood, I guess, has served as a transition zone from Fairfield to Dunwoody Knoll for approximately the last 30 years. This is the landscaping plan that's been proposed with this project. You can see that there is landscaping proposed along the northern boundary and the western boundary. This particular plan, we have put it in as an exhibit. So with, if this does get approved, this will be a conditional landscaping plan. As well, I mentioned at the last meeting that there is also a landscaping plan proposed along the south. However, this is being worked out with the private agreement with Fairfield in regards to the relocation of, of their storm pipe, which they control. So this is an updated lot coverage map. So the applicant went back and he, he looked at the lot coverage as it relates to the entire site as well as each lot as far as lot coverage. So, so what we have on this plan is that it makes up approximately no more than 50% of the site. And each lot is built between a range of 37% to no more than 70% lot coverage. This has also been included as an exhibit in the conditions. So with council's approval, it, it will be part of the conditions as far as lot coverage. And if you remember, the previous plan had the lot coverage at a maximum of 80, 86%. So with this reduction, they're reducing it down by approximately 16% with the lot coverage. I would note they will still be required to get a variance with this request. Another thing to note is that in an effort to move the storm pipe along the north, the developers requested to relocate it because they want to put landscaping along that boundary. And what we've had is, we've had the planning commission recommend conditions. And I guess I didn't clarify it, but the condition that was, was written was the correct condition at the last meeting. What I failed to mention was that because council discussed it, they need to make a motion in regards to that condition. So condition 22 reads as the planning commission wrote it, which is they are recommending to relocate the line and dedicate the storm pipe to the city. And the developer, this is the condition that the developer has agreed to. The discussion with council has been around with this relocation to convert it back to a private pipe. So the option there is to amend planning commission's recommendation and require the applicant to relocate the line or if they relocate the line that they convert it to a private line that's maintained by the new neighborhood. So with this project, the findings, which I mentioned last time, we look at the comp plan as far as the zone. plan as far as the zoning district, and the R50 does comply as an appropriate zoning district for the area. Also, the policies in the comp plan call out aging and place appropriate housing. And this project fills, fills that void as well. I brought up the, the density chart, and we can see by that, that the R50 does act as a transitional zoning district between the higher density RA5 and the lower density R100. And finally, when we're looking at the Swansea Houses project, is able to incorporate that into the development without demolishing historic house, which is part of the historic Dunwoody Trust. So with that, and with these findings, we are recommending approval with the conditions that are listed in the staff report. So that's all that I have, and I will hand it back over to council. Thank you very much.
Okay. Questions, comments? Who wants to start?
I'll just, I'll start that. Prior to, just as we started meeting, Michael Smith had sent us an email regarding the clarification on his position on the stormwater pipe.
Okay.
That, just, I don't know if anybody had a chance to see that.
No, will you tell us what it said?
The, I have not recommended the relocation of Storm City Drain. The relocation was proposed by the developer so he could plant a buffer along the property line where the city's pipe is currently located. If the developer chose to relocate the pipe for the benefit of his development, then my recommendation was for the new, longer pipe to be maintained by the new neighborhood as a private pipe. And also, I just kind of, I asked Michael Smith earlier, and Austin Glen, just to the north, not too far north of this neighborhood, that also has a private road, also has a private pipe. So it certainly is.
All right.
Um, no, not at this time. So I guess before we get too much further, I mean, according to John, we need to make a motion to make that change to the stormwater pipe. Is it appropriate to do it now, or do we need to discuss?
I think we do an amendment when we're at, I think, John, Bill, somebody like my children. Do we need a separate motion for a condition change, or would that just be an amendment?
You can simply, you can make an amendment on your motion. You can make a motion and amend it, you can, you can make the motion and add an amendment to it the first time through.
Right.
So you can just add that on in your original motion.
Right, okay. I have a question for staff. This was, and I don't know if you can see it. Do you, does anyone know where this came from? Okay, all right. In the future, give it to somebody from the city, please, so we know.
Brittany.
Oh, Brittany did, okay, I missed it, sorry, excuse me. I missed that, okay. All right. Go ahead, Jim.
Just a quick comment. You know, we, we've heard from a number of folks who are opposed to this proposal. You know, we haven't heard from the, the folks who have emailed us who are in favor. I'm gonna bring up two of those. You know, one is, you know, Dunwoody Knoll to the south, you know, while we've got a resident who's opposed, we've also got an, you know, the, the HOA at the south in Fairfield is in favor of this proposal. We've also got one of the neighbors on the northern boundary at Dunwoody Walk, who's about 45% of the northern boundary, is in favor of this proposal. I just wanted to bring that up, just to, you know, make that explicit for anybody watching.
Okay, thank you. So I have, I still think this project is a little too dense. And I, and I know they, I last, I was off last week for the first time since like March 12th or something, whenever, really since January 1st. And so I didn't get a lot of time to give further feedback. The reality though is, just for everyone who's here, is that this property is going to be developed. It may be something like this, it could be six, by right, it could be six single family homes, which will have no obligation to anyone living around the property. So I just, I want to be clear with the public at large. So from my perspective, from, from my perspective, we are getting really close to what our community needs. We don't need six, I mean, in my opinion, I'm just one person, but from campaigning and talking to hundreds and thousands of people during the campaign, what people are looking for is the ability to have a home in their community, so that when they're ready to downsize, they don't have to leave Dunwoody. Additionally, the conflicting thoughts about the schools confuse me a little bit. Our school infrastructure is not in very good shape. I understand that the location of this might lend itself to the belief that we should add housing that attracts families. I might argue that that's unethical and immoral at this point, regardless of where this property is located. And additionally, this property is an easy walk to Dunwoody Village, which is part of what we're trying to enhance and improve in our community. So the density is, and the process, you know, Richard, are you there? You know, I'm still really struggling with the fact that council sends a message to the ZBA on how to do their job. And I know the ZBA has asked us for guidance, but it seems a bit backwards. Do you have any thoughts on that?
It came down to essentially which application was heard first. You all, you all were first. They deferred because, and then just deferred again last week because they're saying they can't make a decision unless they have the proper zoning that will go with it.
the other condition I would like, and I think I need to ask if the developer would accept it, is that I have been applying this to lots of development in Dunwoody the last few years, which is that if you don't start the project within two years, the zoning reverts back to the previous zoning. So you have 24 months to start, and I think I need a verbal acceptance of that.
We, we can live with that condition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So Richard, or John, I guess?
Yes.
What would it take to get to like an R6 on this, or R60? Like what would be the impact?
We'd have to evaluate it. They'd have to go back and design it and see if it would fit in there.
And then can they, can a developer get a rezoning at an R75 and then use variances to increase the density at that point?
No.
No?
No.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I don't have a, a question, I just want to make a comment at this point.
That's fine.
You know, when we hear rezoning, any type of rezoning, it's one of the things, I take everything with this job seriously, but this is one of the things that we really take serious because this is one of the major reasons we incorporate it as a city, to control the future and the development of this city. And it's something that I take especially to heart when we start to encroach on our residential neighborhoods. And that's exactly what we have here. I think it's important to note that rezoning is not anything that any developer or anyone that comes to the city is entitled to. In fact, the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that they are going to, you know, experience hardships under the current rezoning. And that's not what I've heard from the applicant. What I've heard is, we'd like to do this, you know, because this is what we'd like to do, but we haven't heard that the current zoning is in any way going to create an undue burden to them, and, and that there's no feasible use for the property under the existing zoning conditions, under the existing zoning for the property. And those are the things that we need to consider by, by law as a council when, when considering rezoning. The other thing we need to consider is, will there be a detrimental effect to any of the neighboring properties? And I think we've heard from more than enough people to say that the answer to that is yes. So those are just my comments, I don't have any questions, I just wanted to state that for the record.
Anybody else, John, you have a question?
I'll mirror exactly what Tom said. At the last meeting, I said I was against this for the very same reasons. I believe that this property is currently able to be developed under the current zoning. Condition three, we have to decide whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use at the current zoning. Right now, it can, I haven't heard anything to say it can't be. And then as far as number two reason for denying for me would be whether the zoning proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby properties. We've heard all of the downsides from all of the neighbors surrounded, from many of the neighbors surrounding it, that it's inappropriate and will negatively affect them. And I believe that for me, I'll be voting against this proposal. One more point of information, if I could, Madam Mayor. There was a question that was just raised to developer, whether they would be willing to pull the application after two years. Could I get a, an opinion from the city attorney as to whether that's a allowable condition? Are we allowed to put those types of conditions? Are they enforceable, or are we just ink on paper without any enforceability?
Council member, when they consent to it, it gives the enforceability. If you imposed it without their consent, it would not be enforceable.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Pam.
You're right, this is, this is a, a first. Like you said a couple of weeks ago, Lynn, this is a first for us, and it's a very tough decision. But my fear is, like Lynn mentioned, that it will be developed. It will be developed, period. It's not going to remain the same. And my fear is that six, I'll call them cluster castles, will go up, and there's no conditions, there's no prebuffed, there's no planting, there's no pipes, there's nothing. The six cluster castles will be built. And those will bring families and everything that you, some folks have spoken, they don't want, these big homes will. So that is my fear, that that could happen. Also, with this type of development, it follows our comprehensive plan, that Dunwoody does not have homes like this, masters on main, with a smaller footprint of a home that is for downsizing citizens that want to stay and not move to Florida. So it's walkable to the village, yes, it is across from a school, but these property, how it sits, will not have trampolines in place that's, you know, teenagers with cars. It just doesn't, we just don't see that in any kind of development that's built like this in other areas. So I just wanted to state all of this, and really let the folks out there, let that sink in, mainly the six large homes that could happen. And this also serves a need that we don't have.
I mean, I'd like to also just concur with what Pam has stated. And you think about improper engineering design for stormwater drainage, those things are greater accommodation. If we just take this a generic conversation to have infill, we have a housing shortage in the metro area. We want to promote these folks to live in this area. I think it's a great housing choice, it's a great part of the offering that we would have for folks to come in and live in here. I happen to live in a small cluster community, with townhomes adjacent to me, and I have no buffer. I mean, there's no buffer at all, it was grandfathered in. So our neighbors behind us, clear cut, and all of a sudden now I'm looking at, at, at rooftops, and we've got a lot of extra protection here and guidance to protect those buffers. And I'd like to just focus on the folks that live adjacent around them. You know, I, I live adjacent to townhomes on both sides to me. It doesn't negatively affect my daily life, what I do when I leave my home and walk around or go out in my day and, and do my thing. So again, the folks that are going to live here, I think it's a great, great product. And I'd look at the future of Dunwoody, we will have future infill opportunities because we want to promote more, more housing choices.
We haven't talked about the pipe, which you sent Michael's recommendation. But I also am still, I appreciate that y'all took one house out, is that correct? And like I said, I wasn't available last week for conversations. I don't know how anybody else feels, if they still think it's a little too dense. I, I know John and Tom have spoken, if we'd like them to look at it one more time. And the lot coverage is 70, what does, I understand that, how it might, how do other R50 neighborhoods compare to that, Richard or John, do y'all know?
We haven't studied it, but essentially, R50 is, they have much more impervious areas than normal. They're up near 60, 70, maybe as high as 80%.
Okay. So I think if it's okay with council, what I'd like to do is have staff come back to us just in two weeks with the information about the pervious and non-pervious other R50 neighborhoods. I don't know if anybody else agrees with me. And, and then we will, and then we'll have worked out the pipe issue with the developer as well by then. I don't want to have that conversation up here. And then we can move forward. And again, to the citizens and to the developer even, this is the first residential to residential rezoning we've done since we've become a city. And so we're just gonna, we just have to get through it and learn a little bit on our way. And especially because they can't, the ZBA is looking to us to give them guidance. And so I want to make sure we cover all our, all our cards, I guess, is not the expression I'm looking for, but all our bases, thank you. So.
So if I, just for clarification, so what you're proposing, the two-week deferral to look into this lot coverage issue?
Yes, yes, sir. And the pipe, just to clarify the pipe.
Okay.
Because the email from Michael came to us, only Stacy saw, I don't know if anybody else saw, I didn't see it. So, but I would need a motion to do that.
Question, if I may.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're discussing whether we are going to not follow our own processes, where the city council will approve an R50 zoning on a piece of land that doesn't meet R50 because of all of the variances that are needed. In other words, the set, the setbacks, the, the lot coverage, and a number of the other technical requirements for an R50, we're about, or we want to approve the zoning for R50 when it doesn't meet the minimum requirement.
I don't know, I'll ask Richard or John.
Well, I think there, there are two different cases, the variances and the zoning. You can't look at both of them, because they're done with two separate boards. So you all have to look at the zoning. So does R50 fit that zone?
So normally, the council doesn't rule on ZBA issues. And so that's part of what's complicating this.
Yes.
And can we order the ZBA to rule on it before we will rezone?
Not really.
I'm not the queen, but can we request that they do their best to, to make a decision before? we make a decision?
I think what they said was you all set the zoning and they will determine whether they, variances are warranted based on the zoning.
Yes. Okay. Did that answer your question, John?
Again, I like to follow process and I'm not sure that we are following our own process. I think if there's an issue in the sense of who goes first, or in the sense of the process, I would prefer to deny this and fix our, you know, the requirements if that's what we need to do. I'm just not sure that we're following our own rules, procedure. That's all.
Okay.
If I could comment on that, I mean, I think we've kind of determined that our process is broken. You know, with that said, you know, it's what we started the city with. It is what it is. You know, the question is, you know, are we doing, you know, the property owner's justice to hold them to a broken process that we've all said we need to fix? You know, when, you know, there is a, you know, if we do want to go forward with this, there's a remedy, you know, by going through the two separate processes, sort of in, not in tandem, but you know.
Just as a feedback, I'm looking at for the lens of the neighbors, not as much as the developer. So in the sense of are we being fair to the neighbors by not following our own processes?
You know, there's neighbors that are in favor of this. There's neighbors that are not in favor. So, you know, it goes both ways, John. There's a lot of, there's neighbors that would like to see this get done and remove the uncertainty.
Okay. I am curious, Richard, the zoning ZBA packet for the November 5th meeting still had the mask and for 85% impervious surface?
Yes, because he submitted that after that meeting.
So you're recommending, okay. Well, no, because, no, the site plan is dated November 3rd. The ZBA meeting was November 5th.
Right. But, but the agenda was a week before that when we had put it together. And he said, I'm thinking about recommending. He hasn't amended it yet.
Okay. Wait a minute. Now, okay, he hadn't, he hasn't amended his variance request is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
So.
I think, I think we need.
Yes, because now that, that's a very good question, Stacy. That's a very good question. Because they didn't see what we're asking.
So one of the questions might be that would, if the number had not been 85%, if it had been lower, would they have been willing to consider it before we consider it? And I'm guessing you can't speak for the.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. So I'm going to ask again if there's enough support on council for a delay, a deferral to see if we can continue to sort of smooth out some of this.
I recommend we defer.
Okay, is that a motion?
Second.
Yes, I have motion.
Moved by Pam, seconded by Jim.
Is it to the next scheduled meeting?
I think it's more than two weeks, but the next scheduled meeting after Thanksgiving. Right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I call the question on deferral signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So the deferral passes four to three. Sharon, you probably need to know that it was Tom, John, and Stacy that voted against the deferral. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. We will move to agenda item 12, review and consideration of new Dunwoody Village District zoning regulations, chapter 27. It's TSW.
You're unsilent.
If Caleb's speaking, we can't hear him.
Can't hear you.
And Ginger, he's not showing on mute on our end. Right?
Yes, I don't show muted either.
You're fine. Oh, no, that was Ginger. Try again, Caleb.
How is this?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was trying to be on my phone because it tends to be clearer. I have an echo.
Now he froze. Okay. If you said anything to us, we totally missed it.
I did not. I introduced myself. I did, we are here to discuss some final potential revisions to the Dunwoody Village zoning district that we have put forward based on the comments that you received at the last public hearing. And what I've done is rather than prepare a formal presentation, I recognize that many of the considerations are really what I would call policy considerations. And so in coordination with Richard and city staff, we have made a revised version of the ordinance for your consideration, but wanted to touch on four potential comments that were received at the last meeting. The first item, which as you're aware was very, very much discussed, was the buffer. And the current draft before you for consideration this evening continues to incorporate the generally 50 to 150 foot buffer that was recommended by the planning commission. Now, after listening to some of the initial comments from members of the public, I did want to draw your attention to one aspect of the code, which is the regulating map. And as several homeowners have pointed out, the buffer adjacent to the western side of the study area today is a little bit irregular. And so what we have done to address that is to actually put on a regulating map that the existing buffer must remain. And so I did want to just point out to you and members of the public that that existing buffer shown on there behind the shopping center must remain and it most must remain on the western side and also the north adjacent to what I believe is Winter Haven. So that was one thing that's already in the code that I wanted to point out that we have not changed. The other thing that we talked about at our last meeting was really related to issues of of design and permitted uses. Several of the council members asked us to look at increasing the amount of front yard available for outdoor dining. And so we have written potential language that would do just sat. That is included in your packet this evening for consideration as I believe exhibit, let me make sure I have the correct option, exhibit A, which effectively would change the proposed setback or commercially mixed use subareas to 20 feet where outdoor dining is provided. So that, that would be a policy decision that if the council would like to incorporate that in all of those applicable subareas, you would, you would adopt amendment one. The second amendment that we have looked into was the issue of whether or not to allow single family housing. You know, that was something that was very important to several members of the council at the last meeting. And so we have also prepared an optional amendment number two, which would allow single family dwellings, detached houses within the residential subarea, the DV2 subarea. And then what we've also done as part of that is we have proposed to hold those building types to the same architectural and street design standards of the townhomes. Townhome regulations in this draft code have standards requiring porches and stoops and a certain percentage of the window. And they're very fitting for a single family home. And so we, we proposed that those architectural requirements would also be appropriate for, for single family product. And then the final thing that council asked us to look at was really this issue of how do we regulate multi-unit housing? And you may recall that the previous proposal would have allowed all owner occupied multi-unit housing by right and would have allowed rental housing by special land use permit. After looking at other jurisdictions, after looking at sort of what I believe are sort of legal issues associated with that and the options available, we have proposed that the recommendation that we believe is most appropriate would be to make all multifamily residential uses, whether they are not, whether or not they are owner occupied or rental occupied, make them subject to a special land use permit. That would give council a wide degree of latitude in whether or not to approve those permit applications. And then, as you're aware, one of the criteria that you would consider as part of that is conformance with the comprehensive plan. So if the comprehensive plan had any policies in it about the mix of residential owner versus rental, all of those kinds of conversations could really be guided by the, by the policy and the comprehensive plan or any subsequent policy that the city chose to adopt. And so those three policy changes have been, again, put forth as an addendum for council's consideration. We didn't feel that we had enough, sort of enough of a mandate after the last meeting. So we have given you a revised code that cleans up a couple typos that we found. And then if council wishes to make, to make, to adopt the code with any of the changes that I've mentioned, each of those amendments is in fact a sort of freestanding addendum that could be done to the code. So if the council wished to adopt all three, they could motion to adopt the code and then amend it as shown in exhibit eight, one, two, and three. Or if you wanted to adopt one and three, you could do that or two. We felt that that final decision was really a very important policy decision for your consideration as elected officials and that your, your guidance should really be the, the direction the city takes in that respect. So thank you.
Right? Any questions? And I guess essentially, Richard, or we're really discussing at this point 12, 13, and 14, correct?
Yes.
Even though Sharon will need to read them each.
Correct.
Actually, yeah, 14. So with that, John, go ahead.
Thank you, Caleb, for the presentation. You mentioned the buffers on the west side of the village. I want to make sure I understand exactly where you're quoting that from and so that we can go through the various properties with you. I'm looking at page, looks like five, I'm sorry, 10 of 106 on the first document, which is the, I just want to make sure I'm in the right document for you. The rezoning 20-01, 20-01, page 10 is where I think you're coming from. Can you get back there? Buffers and transition yards. It's 27-107B, number seven. Is that correct? Is that where you're talking?
Yes, Councilman. And then if you go to the page immediately after that, you will notice that the regulating map, where it identifies that particular buffer, it has language saying that it must remain. So the text and the map are intended to work together to provide maximum protection for those adjacent homeowners.
Okay. So as far, but that is only then, how does that, what's the difference then between the Dunwoody Village one, Village Commercial versus the DV3, which is the residential? Can you explain the differences there? Because I believe there's differences in the zonings and the transitional yards and things of that nature.
Yes. I'm going to defer to staff to answer that, if only because that, that is the, the blue, the DV, the DV3 was really intended to reflect the current residential zoning. And staff can talk about the buffer requirements there.
Right. The buffers on the west side, north of the church and along Winter Hall subdivision, those were laid out in various zoning cases. What we suggested is with the exception of the Dunwoody Village townhomes, which we're letting that stand as it is, all of the buffers are 30 feet.
With. So that's a buffer of 30 feet or is it a buffer of zero with a transitional yard of 30 feet?
It's a buffer with a transitional yard.
Okay. So in reality, it's 30 feet of transitional yard.
That's right.
I was looking at the property lines for the west side of Dunwoody United Methodist Church along Trail Ridge Way. And I noticed that the property line goes right through the bank of trees. So if that property were developed at some point in the future, Dumpsy could clear cut those trees and put it back 30 feet of a transitional yard at their property line.
That's correct.
And that's much different than what we're hearing from the residents who were hoping to have the 150 buffer that the neighbors just a block to the north have that back up to the commercial.
That's correct.
Is there any zoning protection? I heard of a relationship or a covenant or a contract between Dunwoody United Methodist and the Trail Ridge Way Homes. Are we aware of any zoning buffers or protections for that community there?
I am not aware.
I, I'm checking with the church right now and he, Roger, their CFO, is checking with his predecessor before him on that statement. So I'm waiting to get an answer on that right now.
Okay.
Yeah. It may not be a zoning condition. It may be a private agreement.
All right. So those private agreements then are not incorporated into our zoning code? Or should they be? Or how does that work?
They're not. So for example, Felicia who asked about the fence, that's a grin of between her and the publics.
Okay. I'm interested to hear about those. I want to make sure there's protection for the residents along there and consistency where Caleb said that we're going to be keeping the buffers as they are. And I'm not sure that, how that affects the two houses that are sort of the dugouts of the end of the street there, Caleb. Is, how does that affect from what you were saying?
Yes, Councilman. That is an area, and I actually measured that about an hour ago with Richard to make sure. Because those parcels sort of jut out into the otherwise wider buffer, the narrowest section there where a buffer would be required is 50 feet, which would be sort of at the southern, southern parcel. If you look at the drawing, it does get wider as the property goes north. And so the language in point number seven B, as you mentioned earlier, says the minimum shall be 50 feet, except as otherwise shown on the regulating plan. And the regulating plan does show it as being much wider. We did that because it was, it was very inconsistent today and I couldn't think of a, a really clean way to otherwise define that because it is so consistent, inconsistent other than graphically, which is effectively how it, how it falls on the ground today.
Okay. I'm a little confused on those two properties and maybe we can clarify that. Richard, do we have a, or John or somebody, can we put up a transitional yard for TF4 in the sense of the 30 foot buffer, just to show the residents in the room what the 30 foot possibilities are? Again, I'm worried about, just at one point, I thought we were taking Dumpsy out of the rezoning and out of the village overlay. It's now back in the overlay. So now that they want to be there, I'm more worried about the residents there. But I just want to make sure that we look at it from that perspective. The tree line, from what I was looking at, the property lines, the property line goes right through a bank of trees. Half the property line is the residents and half the property line, it zigzags a little bit, but is on the Dumpsy side. bit, but is on the Dempsey side. If Dempsey were to clear cut, they would still have to put back 30 feet of trees, a transitional yard like you see on the screen.
That's correct. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah. So if, if they did clear to the property line, they would have to replant these trees.
Okay, so again, I'm just trying to think of when I looked at the map, I don't always, I'm not sure there's actually 30 foot of trees from their property line. If they cut back, I'm not sure they would cut away the trees in order to put back what they would have to have here in front of you. I'm not sure of the topography, but this is what's currently being proposed right now.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand what's happening on the property lines. Because again, a couple of weeks ago, I was thinking that the Dempsey was out of the rezoning, but now it's back in, so I'm worried about the, how it affects the neighbors.
Right.
And as far as the residential zoning, that could also possibly allow a parking deck? Is that correct, Richard?
That's correct.
Correct.
And as far as the density or the zoning or the buffer behind it, it would still then be a zero buffer of the 30 foot transition yard is the only thing that would be allowed or could be forced to put behind the parking deck, is that right?
That is correct, councilman.
Okay, and that parking deck could be how high? Three stories?
Three to five, depending on where it is.
All right, a five story, again, I don't know the topography and I don't know what's planned for at some point in the future. I just want to protect the neighbors. If that parking deck were five stories right behind my house and clear cut everything but the 30 feet and brand new trees got put in, I'm not sure it would adequately buffer, but that's just my opinion. I've been, I've been hogging the microphone and I know others want to maybe talk about the subject, so I'll, I'll let others speak, but that's what's on my mind at the moment just on that one side of the Dunwoody Village overlay.
Go ahead, Pam, you have something?
I was, when Stacy and I and Richard met with the senior pastor and their CFO about a month ago, basically where these homes sit, it backs up to, yes, trees and then the soccer fields. So the, there would be, these homes would never look at a parking deck because it's the soccer field and that parking deck would go further down past the scout hut.
So what you're suggesting, John, is that they would, they could eventually replace the soccer fields with a parking deck? Is that what you're pondering on?
Again, we are changing the zoning. They can do anything they want under that zoning preference.
Right.
And they've, again, I thought that was coming out, it's now back in. Now, just now it's worried about what is allowed to go there and what is the buffering to the houses to the immediate west? I want to make sure it's an appropriate buffering, buffer, because literally five houses up the road, they go from zero to a 30 transition to a big, huge buffer of 150 buffer. So I'm just looking for fair equity and ma, really, I just want to make sure it's appropriate, whatever's there. I don't think the soccer fields are going away, but again, there's also maybe a parking deck going in, so what's, what's appropriate, that's all.
Mike, go ahead. I thought that we have a regulated map that, where you have parking opportunities placed and there's not one place there.
Right.
So those are city, potential city funded parking decks. So you can have them other places, but the city will not participate in them.
And, and councilwoman, I might, I might also add that there are parking maximums and the locations identified on the plan would allow you to exceed the maximums because the parking would really effectively be public parking.
So is there a way, since I think we have enough questions on some of the other stuff that we're probably not voting on this tonight, is there a way to put language in there about parking decks and single family neighborhoods or is that too labor? Is that too complicated? Like in terms of distance from or, or buffering from?
That would be a very easy policy change. We would, we say no parking deck shall be located within X feet of any single family residential district.
Right, because I, I think that, you know, the conversations with the church, I, I don't, I've never heard them wanting to get rid of their soccer fields.
No, no.
And so I think.
Or the Boy Scout hut.
Or the Boy Scout hut, so.
Yeah, they actually have a plan, an old plan with parking deck in the parking lot in the rear.
Right, that's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Joe.
Would we enable all parking decks to be built in the village requires slup?
Yeah, except we might be the ones building them.
But just to be sure, absolutely, any parking.
We could do that, that's probably the simplest fix rather than trying to define what it has to look like now, since we're not talking about anything happening anytime soon, correct? Would that be the simplest fix, Richard, is to require slup for parking garages?
Yeah, with the exception of those four, or you saying, or any parking structure?
Probably any parking structure so that if council can approve, you know, if there's concerns about buffering or whatever, they can be addressed at the time the projects are proposed. It should be a fairly, especially because if there are parking garages, it should be a fairly straightforward process. Council has to sign off anyway, I would guess. Okay, so if y'all could make that change, I think there's consensus on that. Does anybody disagree with a slup for parking garages? Okay, thanks, Joe, for the solution. I had to run out for a second. I don't know who else's turn.
Oh, no, just John.
Just John, okay. John, do you have anything else?
At some point, we have a number of residents in the audience as well as on Zoom that may still want to give feedback. I know they gave feedback at the beginning, but we're also in deep discussions on properties that affect them, so we may want to open up public comment for a short period just to get feedback.
Okay.
Just possibly.
Okay, let's see where we are. Let's see if we can get them addressed without maybe having, see if we can get all the questions answered, let's see. Joe, do you have anything?
So the, the 11 page PDF, that one is the master plan update, it's more verbiage, but it talks about updated street improvements, so you know, that's the street stuff, I love that stuff. This is the union of public works and planning, which is, has to be holistic, so I really appreciate the idea, speed limit reduction at 25, pedestrian lighting, ADA, see, all that kind of stuff, I love that, but you know, and this may be either go to Michael Smith or Richard, on October 7th, Michael, you presented us a different option for complete street considerations on Shambly Dunwoody multimodal project concept. And that talked about, I'm looking at that from the October 7th, and it talked about potential where we were segregating, you know, cyclists from pedestrians, we're not putting them on a same facility or, you know, forgive me because we've had so many things going on. Am I missing that in this document? I just see a 12 foot multi-use trail, that's all I seen in this, in the current plan that were presented.
No, you all asked us not to amend it because it's just a guiding document. So obviously, the engineering will dictate it.
Okay, all right, great. All right, that, that's all the questions I have, thanks, right now.
Mine's more of a procedural, because I'm new to council. The special land use plan, a slup, could someone educate me on how that gets passed? Is it an arduous process for developers? And when we look at like the rezone, you know, we have certain rules that we have to look at and apply them. So are those the same rules for a slup or are they different? And what is a timeline to be able to, for a developer to be able to do a slup?
The timeline is essentially the same as a rezoning. They go through the same process, the application goes to planning commission and then comes to you all. The rules are slightly different. I don't have them here. I can provide.
Specific rules like for ZBA and for rezon that we, that we apply to slup, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Pam? Okay, Jim? Oh, okay, sorry, we gotta do something about this screen, I forget every two weeks because Eric or somebody in the fut, Jay, somebody in the future, because I can't see Tom, I guess I could try to sit taller. So I might have missed this from John's clarification, for the neighbors that live behind Publix that have a defined undisturbed buffer, what, how are we managing that? And excuse me if I met, missed that with John.
You want to go ahead, Caleb, and explain that?
Yes, and if I, if I may, I can show you the actual text if that, if that's easier. I don't know if this is possible or not. So I'm pulling up the, the code now. Okay, so let me, let me find what section we're on. So you get to this part of the code that talks about transitional buffers, which we're almost there. Sorry. Have I passed it, Richard?
That's not it, it's, it's earlier.
Pardon me. To, well, I'm, I'm trying to find it effectively what it says, here we go, is that 7A refers to the, the citywide standards except as other, otherwise shown in B, so that's where what Richard was talking about adjacent to the church would apply. And then under B, we have gone through and we have said, we're DV1 commercial, but it's a single family district to the west, an undisturbed buffer of 130 feet is required except adjacent to 1205 and 1206 hidden range lane. And this is where I said, except where, where a 50 foot buffer is required and as shown on the regulating plan. And so we go to the regulating plan, the regulating plan says adjacent to the two properties, the existing undisturbed buffer must remain. And the reason I had to do that is because if you can see my cursor, it's only about 50 feet today at the southern end, but it flares out as you go north. And so I wanted to have a way that all of this additional stuff that really doesn't follow a set number, a set numeric, can be reflected and preserved in its current condition. And so I felt that the best way to do that was with the map.
Makes sense.
What?
That makes sense, I'm sorry, that makes sense to me.
So I'm going to take a moment of merril privilege and I'm going to ask the homeowner that lives at one of those two homes to come up here, please, because I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. All right, so if you don't mind clarifying a little bit.
Sure, so when I read this, page five, which is what Caleb is referring to, and that's what I had said initially, that the words don't match the map. And when you leave something open like that, it leads one person to interpret it one way and one person to interpret it another. There's no exact line, there's no exact measurement where this exactly falls. So somebody could come in and say, it's supposed to be 50 feet, because that's what it says in the words. And the 50 feet ends at my fence, at the fence between Publix and me, which there's a whole lot of extra space. Then on the south side of my property, the 130 foot from the person who's on hidden, I think it's called Trail Ridge Circle, 130 feet ends 30 feet after, and it's in that 50 plus foot buffer. So that could all be removed too, based on the words. So if the map was identified better, I like that idea of making the map regulating, but the map probably needs to be more clear because where the dotted white lines are, is that the cement that's behind Publix? Because in that case, it's way more than 50 feet. And so what it says in the words is except, it says, except where it's adjacent to 1205 and 1206, where the undisturbed buffer with a depth of 50 feet is required. Well, but if you're covering the whole thing, it's way more than 50 feet if you're covering beyond the fence and all the way up to where the road is, because it's graded, there's like actually a really big hill that goes down. And then there's the cement behind Publix. So if all of that's going to be undisturbed because we're so close, as well as my neighbor's, you know, corner over there, that's wonderful. It's just that the words don't say that. So it leaves a lot of open to interpretation. If I'm somebody who wants to cut into that space, I could perfectly say, look, the words say that, it's only 50 feet. And it's 130, not measured from my south line, but measured from the, the adjacent property. So it's not like I actually have 130 foot going south, and especially in the spot that's closest to the commercial, which is why I brought that funny thing, because it's kind of hard to understand that like, my, when I, when I'm in my backyard, it's the entire Publix that is like sort of right there. It's not just to my west. You know, actually, my house is, doesn't even have any windows that way. It's the back that has the windows and, and yeah, I can see actually Publix through the trees, especially in the winter, but those are really tall trees that give a lot of coverage. If you're talking about changing any of that to be some smaller trees and you're going to increase the size of the buildings, there goes the whole buffer of, for noise and light. We'll be able to see five foot parking garage, I don't care if it's even in the middle of Shambly Dunwoody Road, I'll be able to see it if there's nothing, no trees there or low trees.
Okay.
So I think if it was more clear on the map.
So Caleb, is what she's saying fundamentally different than what you wrote or is it just some language that we need to address?
What I, what I would love to do, Madam Mayor, it's, at the end of the day, I don't believe it's different, but I am sensitive to the importance of clarity and language. So what I would propose we do is, you know, if the council is so willing, we could create, we could reword this, we could say the existing buffer shall remain, as shown on the regulating map. And then what I can do is I can actually go into the map and put various measurement points. It's not that hard. I just want to make sure that we have something in the record that is as precise as it can, can be, both from the city's perspective in terms of administering it and the homeowner's perspective. And I think that would be the easiest, simplest way to do it.
Okay, that's, we'll, we'll get there, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, because one of the things we're trying to do is respect the buffers that were defined previously, correct? I mean, at least me, okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, John.
Looking at the village overlay in the sense of the residential, we did a nice little walking tour of Alpharetta and we looked up and we saw those balconies. And I'm trying to figure out, okay, what are we allowing by right and what are we allowing by slup? And where are we on various aspects in the sense of how are these buildings being defined for use? When I look at the 27 dash 107B6, the use table, some things are by slup and some things are permitted by right. Multi-unit owner occupied are permitted by right and multi-unit is by slup. And I don't think we have anything in there in the design aspect of things like balconies and the construction standards of some aspects of it. And I, I'm just trying to think, these are the minimum standards that we're putting in and I'm just not sure if we've hit all the metrics and things that we would really want. If someone had a slup, we would start looking at things, you know, that we really want in our community. And I'm just not sure we're hitting all the markers. Maybe it's just me, maybe it was just, you know, I looked up and I've had balconies when I was in a multi-unit duplex or multi-unit living situation and I loved my balcony. And maybe it's just me, but it's minimum requirements and I'm not sure we're hitting the metric on things like that. So I just wondered if we could, if anybody else feels the same way or am I just missing the mark or am I catching something that maybe I should, I don't know.
I think it's actually a pretty astute observation. I think we want, you know, maybe, what do you think, Richard or Caleb?
We could include language in there if it's not already in there for the balconies and whatnot. I think the biggest difference is how do we put a code in place so that people can, by right, have some things and not have to take everything through the zoning process or do the slup process.
Right, but I thought we were doing. Right, but I thought we were doing multifamily all by slump now, correct?
Right.
Okay, so this would be more important, no, multifamily ownership too by slump, right? Yes, all multifamily, except for townhomes and single family.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just looking at one of the documents, I'm looking at 27-107 B6. I'm looking at a table that right now currently shows it as permitted by right, multi-unit owner occupied. At least what I have in front of me shows it, I'm not sure if, there it is right there.
Yes. Right there. Yeah, yes, Councilman, you're correct. Although I did mention earlier that our recommendation to council for consideration is to require a special, special land use permit for all of them. And that is shown in the exhibit, pardon me while I pull it up, in the exhibit. In the amendments, then my computer is not showing, I believe amendment, it's the third amendment, the third amendment. Amendment three.
Madam Mayor, I think we should just, my opinion, maybe we should look at the amendments really close and then kick it back to staff and try to make those final and then have it all come back to us as final in the next couple of weeks.
Yes.
That's just one way of doing it.
Yep.
All right, so we're starting here, is that right? Amendment three, is that what we're starting with? John, is that what we're starting, okay. All right. So, wait a minute, which, I need to, what document, because it'd be easier to look on my iPad.
It's the DV District's Potential Updates Version Two, V2.
Which number is that under?
12.
Okay. Version two, okay. So.
So the first one is the Build to Zone.
Build to Zone, does anybody have questions with any of those?
It's a restaurant, yeah.
Okay. The second one is. I'm trying to see how this works, detached homes?
Keep scrolling up.
Okay, up?
Well, down.
Down, okay. Detached homes, yes, okay. So, is it appropriate to make sure that they have welcoming frontages, like porches? As opposed to just going straight to the front door or something? Or is that an inappropriate use of this process?
It's a, a process that the staff will handle.
Okay. But how do we, I mean, this is not happening tomorrow or five years from now or maybe 10 years from now. So how do we make sure what our vision is, is reflected in this document? Or we don't?
A lot of this is included.
Okay.
But not, you know, they don't have to come to you all with full elevations.
So, I understand they don't have to come to us, but what I'm asking is, is that if we don't want a situation like maybe has already happened and done what he, if we want it to be a welcoming, like a more interwoven into the fiber of the city, so that there's maybe all the single-family homes have to have front porches or something, is that an inappropriate ask and a use of this document?
If, if, if that's what you all want, we can include that.
Okay.
And like garages are in the back, those kind of things.
That kind of thing, like.
If I may, just to the point of clarification, I'm going to share the actual, you notice that it says they must conform to the, the building type standards were townhomes, which I've now pulled up for your, to clarify that point to you. And then when you read the townhome text, it says that there must be entrance from a steeper porch. And above there, garages must only be accessed from the rear. So we've already put in place a lot of the design provisions for the townhome that translate very well to the single-family home.
Right.
Because we didn't want, you know, the community vision was really a village where you don't just have garages facing the street.
Right.
Is there any, I mean, I'm looking at this and that's kind of what we want. Is there anything, I can't think of anything missing?
Anybody see anything they want different? No?
No, again, this is what's on the townhomes, but very little is on the general building aspect. I mean, when I looked at the general buildings, the sense of the balconies, for example.
No, well, that would be a different.
Right, again, it's a bit different building type.
We were talking about the single-family homes and they have to comply to that. So that was this amendment, all right? So we're moving on, we're okay with that. Now we're on to the multi-unit building, I think, which is, oh, on our occupied. So is this multi-unit, is townhomes, is that correct? Or is this something different? Could it be condominiums?
Multi-unit is any, any three or more units in a building that are not townhomes. So it's effectively rental condos, any of the above.
And so it doesn't look like we have any design requirements for this, is that correct? Or am I missing something?
That is not completely correct. The, the multi-unit buildings are held to the general building standards as the councilman mentioned. However, there, those requirements, they're, they address windows, they address doors, but they don't address, for example, balconies, which is the point that the councilman mentioned.
So how do we fix that?
You would direct me to update the code so that multifamily units must have balconies. And I could.
Or a certain percentage of units should have balconies or something along those lines?
Or all of these are going to come back to you in a slump, so you can look at them at that time.
Okay. Um. So. Anything else? Okay, so are we comfortable with, do we want Caleb to draft new standards or we, yes? So they would like to see, I think, would like to see some kind of standards about balconies and stuff? Or balconies, not, and stuff?
That'd be with usable space, not a one.
Yeah, not a Romeo and, I think it's called a Romeo and Juliet balcony, which is where it's just a tiny space. Yeah, usable habit, habitable space.
Okay, I, I will propose something.
Okay.
And could you all give us direction again on item one, two, and three? Or?
What, is that the amendment you're talking about?
Yes.
So I think on one, we were good. On two, we didn't talk about it, because I think we.
Two was, two was the detached house.
The detached houses, and we're good applying the townhouse, home standards to that. And three is balconies.
And three is the multi-unit building unit requirement slump.
Balconies.
I'm, I'm fine requiring a slump.
Right, right, we're requiring, I think that, was there any disagreement on slumps for residential? Because I might have been out for that. So we're fine with that. Okay. Anything else?
Just, just for clarification, I think council is also pretty clear on the balcony with usable space as a guidance for future developers.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, I understand it's going by slump, but it's just one thing for guidance.
Yeah. It makes it easier because you're not sending it back for everything.
Thank you.
About rooftop decks too.
And they're permitted in this, right?
Yeah, absolutely. There is a requirement in the code for, for open space, which we mentioned before is much higher than the current requirement and, and rooftop decks are permitted.
Okay. But we don't allow, I just want to clarify something. We don't, we don't, what happens if in the development, they come for, a development comes forward that all their open space is on the roof? Is that allowed? So therefore it's not public?
Let me check here.
You don't have to look it up because you're taking this back anyway. So if we could just make sure that there's some common used, because I know it's a thing, right? We do it in perimeter, we ask them not to take, put all their public space on the roof, all their open space on the roof.
Yeah, they have to make it, I think, public if they're going to put it on the roof.
Oh, okay, well, I don't necessarily think that every condo building has to have all the green space public. It can, some of their green space they can get credit for on the roof, but it just can't be all their green space. So if y'all will take a look at that.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, I checked, Richard is correct. We, we've incorporated the perimeter language here and it says that all open space used to satisfy the requirement must be public.
Okay.
But we can come up with additional.
Slump, they can ask for changes, correct?
Right.
All right. Anybody else have anything else for them? All right, just keep, keep on pushing away. And if we could get this back on the 30th, that would be great.
Yeah.
That's our next meeting. It is. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think I'm going to need motions to defer on, is that right Sharon? So, number 12 was to review and consider.
You will need a motion to defer for 12, 13, and 14, Mayor, they all go together.
And we need to do each one individually, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Moved by Jim, second by Pam, any further discussion? I mean Stacy, thank you. Go ahead, John.
What's the timeframe? Does staff have a certain time that they need it back to us by or?
I asked for November, oh, we need to say that, November 30th.
November 30th.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of the deferral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number.
I defer item 13 to the 1130 meeting, resolution to without update to the DV master plan.
Second.
Moved by Jim, second by Joe, any further discussion? Seeing none, signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Number.
Move to defer item 14, we're going to amend the zoning map to 1130.
Uh. That was moved by Jim, second by Stacy. All in, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to, oh, go ahead Sharon.
I have another 15. There's a resolution.
Oh. Oh, it's a defer.
Yeah, this is going to be deferred as well.
Jim moved to defer item 15, second. Oh, okay, move to, Jim moved to defer item. All right, Jim moved to defer item 15, the review and consideration of the Dunn Woody Village Moratorium until November 30th. Stacy seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharon, the passage, the referral passage unanimously.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just one, one quick question or statement. That moratorium expires December 9th, so I just wanted to give you all that heads up.
I will, hopefully will pass this. We're getting really close to the public, I mean, we are. This is a big deal, because this is forever and we have to get it right. And so I'm sure y'all will come back on the 30th and we will be in good shape, thank you. And thank you for all the work you've already done and the changes you've already made. And for the public participate. Sharon, I'm ready now.
The next item is item number 16, approval of budget for economic assistance support CARES Act funding, Michael Starling.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm here tonight to propose four separate economic assistance programs using the CARES funding. I'll go over each one of them and then open for questions. The largest of the programs is a small business grant fund. I'm asking for an initial $1 million for this program. We believe, strongly believe that the, the demand for that, this grant will far exceed that $1 million. But we did want to get started and, and the $1 million is already in the initial budget. And we also not sure exactly how much money we might want to come back for. So my plan is to come back to council once all the applications are in and we understand the full scope of the request. Also give us a chance to tweak, if we need to, some of the criteria of the plan. This program will be focused on local businesses with 50 or fewer employees and with a physical location in the city. One of the things we've been working on is finding a partner for this program. A lot of the nonprofits that many of the other communities have worked with are just overloaded and they didn't have the ability to help. Jay came up with a great idea to partner with Jacobs. They are incoming financial and administrative services contractor. And so the next item on, on the agenda is actually a services contract to, to manage this program for us. We can talk about that when, when we get to the next item. A second program is an El Fresco matching grant to assist restaurants and other businesses move operations outdoor with a budget of $150,000. This program's going to leverage the work we've already done with, with our small businesses, our property owners on the picnic table project. We're getting a lot of, of demand for not just restaurants, but other businesses. As winter is coming, most of them think that obviously coronavirus is not going to go away. It's getting worse, that, that to continue to operate, they need some help. So our idea is to, to have this $150,000 to be able to match investment from them. And it could be whatever they want. If they, they need heaters, if they want to put out tents, if they want to expand existing outdoor space. They bring a proposal to us, we look at it and determine if, if it's something we want to invest in. Again, we really have no idea how much demand is going to be and how far this money is going to go. But we think that's a good number to start with. The third and fourth programs are a little bit longer term, longer term focus. The two, first two are immediate, right away. We hope to get this money out on the street pretty quickly. But the third program is an entrepreneurship program with a budget of $250,000. You know, we know that small business creation and entrepreneur activity expands when coming out of any economic downturn and we think it will be the same here. We have obviously worked with small businesses, but we've never really had a strong entrepreneurship program here in Dunn Woody. So we think it's going to give us some momentum to, in the future, have a more focus on entrepreneurship. And again, that, that budget is $250,000. And the fourth is a tourism marketing campaign. I don't think I have to explain to any of you how hard COVID has hit our hotel industry. And one of the things specifically in the CARES Act funding is that CVBs can use CARES money to, to, to put together advertising that really sort of talks about how the city is opening, how the hotels are opening, how it's safe to visit here, not just tourists, but also businesses. And I'm proposing a budget of $100,000 for that. Again, that is not money that would be spent immediately. It could be a little bit longer term, looking over the horizon a little bit and telling our story. So I'll stop there and ask, take any questions.
All right, any questions? No, go ahead, Joe.
Hey, Michael, is this 1.5 million, is this a line item in the overall CARES funding budget that we previously approved?
Yeah.
Jay, you want to answer that?
I'll, I'll help with that. The council, the budget the council originally approved had $1 million for economic development as a, what we're calling a project, it's not really the same as a capital project. And then this would move a half million dollars out of the contingency?
Yes.
You know, that, so there'd be a 1.5 authorized in total.
Right.
Okay, I just, just to be able to see where the funds are going to be shifted around and see where the fund balances are as well after this action. We could get that updated and whenever we get an update.
In this case, there's really no fund balance for this because the whole 5.3 million is just the fund. So you're just basically lower, that's all been approved by council. So your contingency of 2.8, you're moving a half million out of that into economic development efforts.
Okay.
And so when we worked, when I worked hard or when we worked hard to get this funding, initially I had put 3 million in this category. And then, being a little less certain about what federal rules may change and some of the commissioners sort of demanding a budget, I asked that we move half of it to contingency, just in case. And so now we can, we have the money in our bank account and so we can spend it, you know, carefully, but we have a little more flexibility. Go ahead, John.
I, I have two more, two more things. Do these have to be, do we have to span all this by December 31st?
Go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, in this case, no, this is part of what we were doing because of the September notice from the Department of Treasury that allowed us to use public safety salaries for it, so the council when it approved last month, basically moved 5.3 million out of the general fund into what we commonly call CARES 2 here, so it removes the 1231 stipulation, but we will still spend 5.6 million in CARES 1 to receive the money for fully, we will receive all the federal money, but it removes the 1231 deadline from it.
Okay, great, just wanna clarify because there's a lot of juggling pieces here, so we have no deadline, hard fat fest deadline to spend this, correct? Just to confirm, right, okay, I see the net, thanks Michael. Last thing, how are we, what's the plan to just outreach to these businesses, the Alfresco matching grant, what, what are we gonna leverage from network, I, I know you got a great network of folks, who are we partnering with to really get the word out that we have these grants out there and engaging and letting people know to come forward?
Yeah, the CARES, the Alfresco would be the first one, we have, we're ready to go with that, Rosemary has worked up a sort of a one or two pager that explains the program and we're ready to go out this week on that, we've already been making some phone calls to property owners and some businesses to talk about it, so that's, that's gonna get started right away. The small business grant's gonna take just a little bit of time, once we get Jacobs on board to do it, there is some work that we'll have to do. Obviously, we'll be work, working with our communications department, the Chamber of Commerce is ready to help, we'll also, you know, like we did early on in, in COVID, send out mailers directly to businesses, we, we will inundate businesses and, and, you know, probably some ads in the prior as, as well.
And one last thing, this is just awesome, right? This is just positive, good news, we all need some good news these days, this is just awesomeness, we're helping our, our fellow community folks out here to, to keep their, their, their self afloat. I love the Alfresco thing, have blankets out there, stay outside, we can have this, you know, for the next several years, you know, I, I look at the differentiating in Dunwoody, you know, hey, everywhere you go out for dinner, you'll have a nice warm place to sit outside here and, and the city's supporting you, so awesome news, thank, thanks everybody.
John.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, it is great news and I think the word of this is gonna spread very fast and there's just two points I need to get clarified on. When are we gonna publish the contingency and when do you expect this to hit the street? I mean, that's, I don't think you've really talked much about that, we're gonna be talking to Jacobs. And when is the contingency is gonna be published as far as the criteria? And then, when do we expect these to be, you know, the applications to be due and when do we expect the money to hit? Because this is just three things, if I'm a small business and I'm hearing about this, I, I need to know my next steps.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we will, I, I don't have a definitive date on when the application will be ready. Jacobs is ready to go though, they've identified people, so, you know, we obviously want to get started as soon as possible, we're, we're getting very close to, to Thanksgiving and the end of the year and we know businesses are in desperate need of this. Once this Jacobs contract is, is approved, if it's approved, we'll, we'll hit the ground running with that, we have simplified the criteria as much as we possibly can, so it's gonna be fairly straightforward, not only to create that, create the application, but then for Jacobs to review the applications themselves and turn this money around very quickly. So, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a definitive date, we probably will have that later this week and certainly will send that to you.
Well, I appreciate that, I wasn't really expecting a definitive date, I didn't think you would have had one, but I just know it, time is of the essence and I know if I'm a small business, I wanna know those questions, so I'm sure I'll get it published really quick, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Jim, go ahead.
Just a quick comment, you know, if, if the Alfresco matching grant is oversubscribed, I would expect you to be back here quickly, you know, asking for, you know, tweaks that, you know, to deal with that. You know, I, I, I'm all for it, so, you know, we, and there's plenty of contingency left, so I just want to throw that out there.
Absolutely, I would, I would not be shy to come back and, and request more.
And to give council an example of it, I mean, the, the not-for-profit grant started at 300, the recommendation to 400 was very easy.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else?
Me. So, this is the second of our big efforts to help our community, we did the vulnerable population grant two weeks ago to, a staff to nonprofits in Dunwoody and then this will, you know, this focuses on helping our employers keep people employed and their doors open, which is, every city is using their funds, well, every city that got funds and again, I have to thank DeKalb County, they were not obligated to share with us, is using their funds differently, but we have been focused all summer on keeping businesses open and this is another step and we'll get the information out as quickly as possible on all these programs and that's all, and we need to vote, I presume, yes, on approving the budget.
Move to, move to approve?
Second.
Move by Stacy, move by Stacy, seconded by Joe, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question, signify by saying aye, all in favor of approving the budget for economic assistance support.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the measure passes unanimously.
Number 17 is professional services agreement, small business assistance grant, Michael Starling.
Okay, thank you, council, for, for approving that, so what's in front of you is a very straightforward and, and, and I think, simple agreement with Jacobs to perform the, the basic services for us and it's really broken down and they're gonna develop the, the application portal hosted either on their website or a third party. They're gonna create, maintain a database of all the applications, make sure they're time stamped, manage all of that for us. They will also have accountants that will certify the eligibility of those businesses and then process the payments, so our idea is that we will just pay them one time and then they will disperse the money to the companies. And I did want to give you a little bit of an idea of, of, of who's eligible and then an idea of some of the people who are not. Obviously, you have to have a physical address in Dunwoody. Businesses in good standing, you have your business license, all your fees are paid up, no code violations. We're looking for companies that have been operating a, a minimum of one year from March 1st of 2020. And also looking for businesses with fewer than 50 full-time equivalent employees, so we are really trying to focus this on the smallest businesses and we looked at, at all of our businesses and we think this captures all of our local restaurants, even the larger local restaurants in perimeter. And you agree to cooperate with, with us as, as we do our audit, I'm, I'm assuming we will do some kind of audit, so. The kinds of companies that are not eligible are publicly traded companies, you know, corporate owned franchises, we want this money to go to local businesses, home-based businesses in this are, are, are not allowed. Businesses owned or operated by City of Dunwoody employees or elected officials are not allowed and then any companies with legal actions against them with the city or, or, you know, code enforcement violation, so we've tried to keep this very simple and straightforward. We think that, that we are gonna get way more demand for this than the million dollars. We have put a cap on this of, of no more than $30,000 to any one business and we are looking at only rent or mortgage between March and September, so we're keeping it very simple for them, they're not gonna have to go in through a lot of work and, and look at how many employees they have. We are willing to reimburse their mortgage or lease payments for those, for those months between the time COVID started and the time we received this money. I'll be happy to take any questions you have on this.
Okay.
Oh, I, I guess I would say, so what, what we've worked out is a, the fee is gonna be on an hourly basis, so they've identified the number of people that they think they need internally, they've identified those hourly rates and they've capped it at $50,000 for this first million, which is from, from what we were talking about from some of the nonprofits, I think a, a really good deal. Again, that's a cap for this first million, if we come back and ask for a second million, we've agreed that we would do basically the same deal with them. Hourly basis with a cap of, of no more than 50,000.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead Stacy.
So, just so I understand, that this contract is to disperse the first million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so if we come back, we will basically just extend this same contract even further.
I'd just like to make a, a quick comment on, on, so I think we're all expecting and probably hoping that there will be a, a second ask for this and a comeback to, to disperse additional funds for our local businesses. And I'd just like to say as far as the contract with Jacobs, I would hope that perhaps maybe we can get that number down a little because I think a lot of the, the costs and, and time will be in establishing the system and, and, and the spreadsheets and all that stuff and that, that kind of work will already be done on the first round, so hopefully we could maybe get the price down a little on the second go around.
Yeah.
We certainly will talk to them about that when we come back.
So, I don't disagree, I want you all to know that this is, I'm very grateful for Jacobs as Michael indicated, we've had not an easy time finding a partner and their rates are much lower than the ones that turned us away, so for that, I am very grateful for them stepping up. Any other comments? I'm seeing none, I need a motion please.
Move to approve.
Moved by Jim.
Second.
Second by Tom. I'm all in favor of the professional services agreement, small business assistant grant with Jacobs, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, signify by saying nay. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 18 is approval of the Athletic Association Manual, Brent Walker.
Evening, mayor and council, the item I'm bringing back to you guys is one that we discussed back on September 29th. It is the Athletic Association Manual and appendix. Since that conversation at the September 29th council meeting, we have discussed some of the concerns that Dunwoody Senior Baseball had with the manual, we've had multiple meetings with the committee and with them and made several modifications that are highlighted in red text in the manual that is attached to your agenda. Primarily, the concerns that they have were their ability to raise funds through tournaments, also concerns about scheduling and any credits for rainout dates or cancellations due to the facility being closed. We added several things in the manual that will allow them through their usage agreement, which will work in tandem and will be negotiated after the, the Athletic Association Manual was passed. In their usage agreement, they will be allowed to have a certain number of games per year as tournament games where the association will be able to charge a fee, they will collect all the revenue from those tournaments and that fund will be used to subsidize their rec program fees so that they will not have to increase their fees, but potentially to just a marginal amount. Some of the scheduling concerns they had were that if they had to make up games or there was a rainout, how would that occur? One thing we will be doing is putting in some additional block time that will be available to the athletic associations where they can schedule activities that may be canceled, if something cannot be scheduled within that block time, we would give them the option of giving them a credit for the next season for those hours. There was also some current concerns about scheduling in general, the day, number of days it would be required to schedule their activities and one thing I want to be clear about and especially to the community is the deadline for them scheduling at 45 days is primarily just for the time slots that they would need for their season, it is not the games or practice schedules for that season. That schedule is actually due to the city one week before the first practice, so all we're asking for is that they provide us a their, basically their rental schedule 45 days in advance. We feel that the majority of our athletic associations have a pretty good handle on what their season needs to be based on their experience and their longevity in the community and the times that they'll need for that, for that season. So I want to be clear about that, I know there were some concerns in the community about us scheduling Dunwoody Senior Baseball or scheduling athletic programs, that is not our intent, our intent is for them to rent a block of time well in advance where they have the opportunity to be the first people that would be able to rent time on those fields for their program and then would give us ample time to then schedule other user groups and allow for the calendar to be posted for other organizations to have time and opportunity to use the fields, so I want to make that clear to the community and to council. There's also some, some concerns about what our relationship going forward with the athletic associations will be, especially Dunwoody Senior Baseball. They are a longstanding partner with the city, our intent is they will continue to be our baseball partner, we are very grateful for what Dunwoody Senior Baseball provides to the city. One of the differences between a partner and someone else that rents from us or a vendor would be that Dunwoody Senior, through their usage agreement, will have a lot of opportunity and a lot of responsibility that you may not see from another user group or someone else that we may have as a vendor to offer a program. We understand that they see our baseball complex as their home and we certainly want to harbor that, we want them to continue to be a member of our community and provide a fantastic program to Dunwoody youth, so in no way is this association manual supposed to take away from the partnership that we've had with Dunwoody Senior Baseball in the past 10 years, we've had the Parks Department. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at the manual, I'm open to any questions or concerns that y'all have moving forward, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions you may have.
All right. Who wants to go first? Or not? Pam, did you have a question?
Brent answered it.
Okay, thank you.
Nonprofit versus vendor, thank you.
Anyone? Motion, okay.
So, the, the nonprofit status, is that the IRS 501(c)(3) status? Or is that just the Georgia, I'm filing as a not-for-profit, just going online and submitting and paying my $75, whatever it is annual fee?
So, right now, they is just to register with the Georgia Secretary of State Office. Must be submitted annually to the city by April 1st of each year.
And that's how it was with that, if we do a athletic usage agreement with, say, Dunwoody, Dunwoody Boys Soccer Booster Club or whatever, they're not gonna be an official 501(c)(3), so we just want to make sure that they're nonprofit status, but not have it be too burdensome.
And the, the open play, Brent, how are we gonna advertise or what's the, the unreserved time, the open, general, public open? What, what does that look like going forward, how are we gonna be scheduled, keeping that notifying? What does that look like, just in general?
Yes, good question, so what, what will happen is the way we'll structure the calendars is the city will go in and put any need dates into a, a quarter calendar of any events that we may have out there or any maintenance issues or anything that we need to block out time for on the fields and then it would be opened up to the athletic associations with the usage agreement like Rush Union, Dunwoody Senior, they would then schedule their times for that season. Prior to that, we would have established what those open play hours would be, so they would be blocked out in the calendar, reserved for open play. One of the things that we've discussed with Dunwoody Senior Baseball is the potential to have 30 plus hours a week for open play time on the baseball fields outside of school time, outside of league play, where those would be set for that season. Once their calendar was put into our registration software, we would then put the calendar online and it would be available for everyone to see, they would be able to rent whatever spaces were still available outside of rec programs and open play, playtimes, it would be opened up to other user groups, churches, businesses, individuals, other types of sports programs would be able to then rent from us at that time.
Okay. Okay, so I, oh, John, go ahead, sorry.
Okay.
Turned my head.
As far as who gets to use the fields when, how, I'm noticing a lot of use, and I'm not sure they're all sanctioned use groups. Are we policing our park system in the sense of, you know, kids karate, this, that? I mean, I've seen a number of athletic uses and, I mean, I'm good with it, but I also wondered how does that affect this agreement and the fairness of that agreement?
Sure. Another question. Yeah, we've seen an uptick in that certainly because of COVID. We've seen a lot of exercise programs and karate dogos and things like that having to meet outside. So a lot of folks, a lot of folks don't know, you know, they don't know that it requires a permit and actually violates park ordinance to be conducting business on city property without a permit. So we politely let them know and we offer them the opportunity either through this manual process to have a rental fee or to come on as an instructor for us and provide that type of program through the Parks Department. So they are issued a permit. The way we will go forward is, yes, we intend to have oversight and move towards having park attendance, so to speak, on the nights and weekends when regular city staff may not be here, help monitor some of those things so that we do give priority to the people that do have permits and do have usage agreements with us and are doing it the right way, that are renting from us properly through the policies set forth in the manual. And not, I'll be ugly about it, but just remind people out there that there is a process and it is open to them if they want, if they choose to do business with us.
Lynn, I just, and everyone, I just want to thank Brett and Kate for working on this and Jay and Linda and Tom. We've all put a lot of hours into this, especially Brett and Kate. And again, the goal of this manual is to make it fair and transparent for all of our user groups. It's been disappointing to see the misinformation that has been spread by one of our partners. We've spent, Tom has spent hours meeting with them. We've all spent hours. This is something for everyone. It can be changed. It's, as Linda told me today, it's not a marriage. It can evolve as we need to. This is a first step and I look forward and, you know, to putting the usage agreement so we can get this moving forward for 2021.
And I'll just, I'll just add to that comment. You know, there's been a lot of concern in the Dunwoody baseball community. And first, let me say this is not a Dunwoody senior agreement. This is to all of our athletic association partners, none of the others of which have voiced any concern with what we're doing. And I just wanted to clarify and stress that we still value Dunwoody Senior as a partner. And the program that they have is very valuable to this community. I participated in it as a coach. My son's played it as a player. So we are in no way trying to do take over, push out, diminish their role in this community. We hope that they will continue to flourish and even grow their program with the city. You know, comments were made at the DHA last night that we've somehow relegated them to being a tenant because they're not a tier one. Well, the tier structure, tier one is the city of Dunwoody itself. So they are in tier two, which is our highest tier of partners, and we do consider them a partner. I've explained that to them, I guess. That message didn't get through, but they're a very important partner with the city. Nothing has changed. As far as the baseball community, I doubt that anyone that participates in the program will even see a difference. This is a policies and procedures manual. Are things going to change internally? Sure. And, you know, Brent is committed to working with all the organizations. Anytime a change, there's going to be inevitable bumps in the road, maybe things that we didn't foresee, but we're going to work with them. We're going to make sure everything works out. We're not going to do anything that harms the program of Dunwoody Senior or any of our other partners. It's very important for this community and will continue to be. So I just want to make that comment.
So I want to thank our staff, Brent, and also Stacy and Pam. I mean, Stacy and Tom. Oh, my God. I used to get so upset when Denny did it. And to say that I share Tom's gently-placed frustrations and that the intention with this athletic manual is to develop a plan for all our facilities so that all our users and partners can know what to expect and the procedures and the policies. And again, it's not a marriage contract. It can be changed as needed, but the constant pushing out of information that it, at the very least, was questionable in its factuality has done enough, has just tremendously frustrated most of us. And so no one is targeting Dunwoody Seniors. This athletic manual is for everyone. And if it doesn't work, if there are red flags, we have established a process where you have two council people that are our direct, the rest of council's direct connection to athletics in Dunwoody, or you can come to any of us or to staff. And of course, the user agreement, if I'm not mistaken, is really the end product and is where Brent, if I'm correct, can be personalized by organization, correct?
That is absolutely correct. Is, works out all those details for that association.
Thank you. So to everyone listening at home, we have a huge obligation to the youth and to others interested in athletics in Dunwoody, but we also have an equally important obligation to the taxpayers and to future councils that are going to have to maintain and refresh these, maintain and refresh these fields and other facilities. And if we, I said it the other day, that if we were faced with the need now, if this was 10 years ago now and we'd done turf 10 years ago, we would not have the money to replace the turf today. And so rather than put a future council in the position of having to make a difficult financial decision, I much prefer that we are careful as we always are. And so with that, I need a motion.
I move to approve.
Moved by Stacy. Second. Second. Second by Tom. Second by Tom. I heard him. I heard him. I heard him. Second, second by Tom. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all for your time on this.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Sharon, next to you.
Item number 19 is approval of the contract for the external auditors for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020 through 2024. Linda Neighbors.
Good evening. In September, the Finance Department put out a solicitation for external auditors. We had two, we had two proposals and after we vetted one of them, they were technically non-responsive because they didn't have a certificate to participate, to, they didn't have a license to practice in the state of Georgia. So that was pretty important that they did have that. So they were technically non-responsive, but we had a proposal from Malden Jenkins, who actually was here when the city did their first cafer. So they were instrumental in helping get the first cafer. We did have the Audit Committee help us with the evaluation as well as the external, I mean, internal auditor. And it was all driven that Malden Jenkins, we would recommend that they would be the next external auditor. The fee was very competitive. Actually, it's a little lower than what we were paying this last year. So Malden Jenkins does over 500 cities across the state and many counties. So we would like to recommend for approval, the external auditors for Malden Jenkins. Yes, sir? Oh, sorry.
All right. Any questions? John?
Thank you, Linda, for the presentation. I, too, would recommend Malden Jenkins. We've worked with them in the past and they are a very good firm. Unfortunately, based on what I'm seeing on your memo, I'm not seeing the contract for approval nor price information that seems to be missing from the packet today. I don't see it either in emails or in any other place.
I'll read, I'll read that out to you if that's all right.
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. Moved by John.
Okay.
Second by Joe. Any discussion on the deferral? Call the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the deferral passes. Yeah.
Mayor, item number 20 is a resolution approving a budget amendment. I will read that. A resolution of any of the budget for the fiscal year 2020 for the General Fund, Confiscated Fund, Grant Fund, Hotel Motel Fund, SPOST Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and the Debt Service Fund of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia pursuant to Article 5, Section 5 of the Charter of the City, beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020, appropriating the amount shown on each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources. With the neighbors.
Yes, we're asking for a budget amendment as a resolution that Sharon read. This is to recognize a little more reduction in the Hotel Motel Fund and the General Fund, the state confiscated assets, the Grant Fund, which is typically only budgeted for the AL-MIG, and you can see that there are several other grants that we were awarded. The Hotel Motel is recognizing the reduction of the anticipated revenues. The SPOST, that is a carryover from their capital projects. It carried over from a prior period as well as the capital projects below were projects that rolled over from the prior year that are project-based. And the debt service is where we had budgeted to transfer more into the debt service fund and this just recognizes that.
Any questions? Comments? I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by John. Second by Jim. Any further discussions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes Sharon unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
With that. Yeah. Is there a 21?
No.
Not nice. Any discussion items? No. Public comments? I don't have any additional cards. Ginger, do you want to check online?
I do have two hands raised at this time.
Okay.
Carrie Hancock, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Carrie Hancock. I reside at 1206 Hidridge Lane. I first just wanted to applaud everybody here on the time and effort that you guys have been taking on taking a look at the Dunwoody Plan. I know you've pushed back quite a bit and asked a lot of questions and I really sincerely appreciate that. Specifically, the council members that called out our two properties, they are the most exposed in this and we want to make sure we get the details there. I think the intent is great. I think the intent is there in the plan. I just think we need some detail. So I'm requesting if Richard and Caleb can work directly with Felicia and myself to make sure those details are covered in the plan before you vote again on the 30th. There's a lot of details on measurements. There's a privacy fence that's not addressed. There's some additional trees that were put in that buffer to protect us. So I just think a little more detail needs to be there. And once that's there, I think we should be good to go. So thank you so much.
All right, Ginger, someone else?
Yes, Ellen Holloway. You should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I wanted to say, first off, thank you to staff and Madam Mayor and the council members. It is clearly obvious that you are spending so much time to make sure that the Dunwoody Village rezoning is done properly and that adequate care is paid to neighbors. I so appreciate that, like so many other people have said tonight. I wanted to point out a couple of things. First off, thank you for your attention to the houses behind Publix. And also in that same section where we're talking about the houses behind shops of Dunwoody, I think it's a little bit confusing and that the map shows a existing undisturbed, undisturbed buffer must remain. Yet it's actually not remaining in full because some of those, some of that buffer now is at 200 feet. And so if we're reducing it to 130 foot plus a 20-foot transition yard, I think it's confusing that it's written that the existing undisturbed buffer must remain in the map, showing in the map, but the wording on the page before is clearly says 130 feet is required plus the 20-foot TY4. So I think we're okay with a compromise of 130 plus the 20. It is definitely, you know, it allows up to 70 feet of existing wood to be cut. So I want to note it that A, it is a compromise and B, I think it's a little confusing that Caleb mentioned earlier that the buffer is remaining, yet in fact, it's not exactly remaining. It is a compromise. So I think maybe to look at some of this discrepancy between what's shown in the map and the wording would be helpful. And also, as mentioned earlier, with the Methodist Church property, I think it needs to be reconsidered that their, their buffer should be 150 feet as well. So thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration in this project and it's much appreciated.
Thank you. John Crawford. Oh, wait, 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 sorry. Ginger, is there anybody else? Because this is the last call. I'm not coming back. So...
If anyone else would like to speak in the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. So now we'll come to the people in the room. John Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, I'm on the board at Dunwoody Senior Baseball. I'm the COO. When the city took over the parks 10 years ago, we were very grateful. One of the very first things that Brendan and his team did was run, so we had clean water going into our concession stand. We had begged the county to do that for years and they hadn't done it and we never thought they were going to do it. Lately, it seems like this new agreement, it's the, it, in many ways, it doesn't help us do the job that we're trying to do. We are going to have to have funds to pay for the increase, the rent that we're going to be paying. And we think fundamentally, the idea of paying for rent for the, for youth sports is not correct. It's wrong. And if you look at the surrounding programs, you don't see rent in what, in how they operate. I don't think it's a good thing for Dunwoody to be charging rent. Scheduling will be more difficult. There's no doubt about that. We certainly accept the idea that the city needs to put aside funds for turf replacement. We want to help with that. We thought with increased tournament revenues, if the city got the bulk of the tournament revenues, that would be the path making that happen. And I still think that's the case. Finally, I appreciate the idea that, you know, maybe after a year, we see how this goes and, and if we need to, we'll make changes. We will do our best in the next year to make this work. But there are some things that I worry about and we'll have to report back at the end of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim McGeorge.
Hello. I know I spoke earlier, but I just wanted to come up here that I'm a little concerned, I guess, that it sounds like that we're nearing a deadline and there was no change in the request for the property between Dunwoody Methodist and the property on Trail Ridge Way to extend it to the 150-foot buffer. There is a portion of the property that the boys got had. There is a portion that is the soccer fields, but there's also a portion that is a parking lot and that covers probably two and a half houses. And I think that was mentioned. So I'm concerned, I, when they... So I'm, I'm concerned, I, when the camp run went in, there was a little concern about noise and I'll tell you, I hear that in my bedroom. I hear that in my kitchen, which is fine. It's not a terrible noise, but to hear cars and a parking deck in your backyard, it's tough. And I mean, I, again, I can hear those dogs all day long and I have a dog, so I love dogs, but it's just, it can be annoying. So for it to be cars, it would just be really, and it would affect not just our street, but streets over. So I ask you to reconsider pushing it to 150-foot buffer and contacting this company before they present for the next meeting. Thank you.
Oh, Tim, please. Thank you.
Hi, thank you again for taking my comments. There were some questions about previous agreements or what was the situation in the past. I can speak to it a little bit. My neighbor next door, our other neighbor, was an original homeowner, made an agreement with DeKalb County and DUMC back in like 1977. And the agreement essentially was you can build the parking lot, put up a bunch of big trees so that it blocks the lights from the parking lot. And in, in agreement for that, there's going to be that buffer of, I think it says 150 feet. I'm not exactly sure what the, stand up straight, but the, but the actual space is there, but that was the gist of it. And that's why you see the soccer fields and the Boy Scout Hut, where you do have that 30 feet, but then that's also why later on, my understanding anyway, is, is that you have the parking lot and the big trees that are up there to block the light and block all those things. And I, I would go one step also beyond just a parking deck or whatever, but the idea is a structure period. Whether it's a new church facility building, whatever it might be. I think for what it's worth to, I'm a member of DUMC. I love that church. But I also am a homeowner and I'm trying to wear two separate hats as it relates to zoning. And I believe that this is a time, per previous comments, that if we're going to do something uniformly, that in this case, because the church is part of the village overlay, it's not, it, it should be zoned in the same way as, for example, the Shops of Dunwoody and, and that consideration. And so that would be my ask of council to consider that and consider the neighbors. You, you all have been really good about keeping us informed and up to speed and certainly very appreciative of that. And I'm looking forward to what can happen with the, the city and the overlay, but would like to ask for some clarification and continuity with all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's any questions or information documents, I'm glad to get in touch with somebody and send that along if, if possible.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment. But city manager comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The, the report you'll receive in just a few minutes goes over each department. The, one thing I want to hit on with Public Works was, was the, in addition to our normal project, we had tropical storm. Zeta came through on the 29th of October and kind of changed, changed our landscape a little bit, along with the numerous trees down in the city, the power outages. And I just want to thank Michael and his crew and also Georgia Power for working through these troubles. It was, it took some time, I know, for past Halloween for many residents to get their power returned. But it was done in a, you know, as, as quick as we could get to that. I know the mayor, you were in contact with Georgia Power as well as I was and just to let the citizens know that we were doing what we could to get the power restored as quickly as possible. The, the Police Department, want to hit, talk one more time about the LPR, the license plate reader cameras. When you read the report, you'll see numerous times where the cameras have helped solve crime and, and also find the person, not only the vehicle, but also the person that was responsible for violations or major crimes, frankly. The, the Parks Department, we are gearing up for the Veterans Day video ceremony on Wednesday. Also, the, the holiday lights at Brook Run Park are scheduled for December 12th through the 28th. So that's coming up. We had our, our Halloween event was a huge success with about 1,500 plus cars and people in attendance at that event for Parks and Recreation. Community development is still working with quite a few inspections each week, each week, 107 inspections over the past two weeks. And here again, one of the indicators I look at for, for the economy is 42 new permits issued during that time as well. As a side note, code enforcement pulled up about 123 signs out of the right of way during that period of time as well. One thing that Michael Starlin hit on tonight, talking about the CARES funding and, and the work that we're doing in that, along with the approach, I'm not going to repeat what he said, but, but it just does have the small business assistant grants, the Alfrisco matching grants, entrepreneurial program, and our tourism marketing campaign. Coming up in, at the next council meeting will be the Dunwoody Gateway and Wayfinding Plan will be presented to the City Council. So that's, that's a, one of the initiatives we wanted to do this year. Also, the public art implementation plan that the city approved at the, on September 29th. We have the, the first read for the, for the ordinance will be presented also at the next meeting of the City Council. IT, you know, last week we had an issue with our email and there's in the report this evening, you'll, you'll find that, you know, over the course of Tuesday afternoon, it was discovered that the emails from our Dunwoody domain were being interpreted as spam by other systems. And there was an issue we had with Sentrylink, which is our provider. And with the emails going through the internet, when you read through this, it gives a full report of what, what occurred and, and about the outage. And I want to thank once again, InterDev and for getting that system resolved very quickly. Email's always been important, but especially during the COVID time, it's even more important for us and as well as for the council to report back to the citizens. The, in marketing, our website, our new website is scheduled to launch at the end of this month. That's on schedule. And then just as a final note, as far as finance, when we have in the hours of operation for City Hall, our front desk reception is open Monday and Friday from 8:00 AM to noon and Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Of course, this Wednesday, we are closed for the observance of Veterans Day. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on this report and I will send this to you momentarily.
Anybody have questions for Eric? Nope. Okay, thank you, Eric. And we have no exec, do we have executive session? Tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Because it's three hours and 18 minutes. All right. Council comments. John?
Thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, we had a public comment by Ms. Catherine Zickert regarding the rezoning and the boundaries and she wasn't here for most of the discussion. At least I don't think she was. Maybe I was blocked, but she did not stay. But part of her complaint was that the city staff did not get back to her and talk to her. So Eric, if there, or Richard, if there's any way in which we can get back to Catherine Zickert, I want to understand what her issue is with the buffers on the Dunwoody Village property. And other than that, a couple of weeks ago, I asked for a update regarding hunting in Dunwoody. We had a very unfortunate incident that happened with a rifle being discharged at the early 3:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, shooting a deer. And I know that's as illegal as can be, but our neighbors are, I've got a number of emails that were upset about it. And I was trying to explain to them what state law is and city law is and what we can do about various aspects of hunting. So I know that update's coming at some point in the near future. So.
And Mayor, if I, if I can interject real quick, that will be on the next, on the next agenda.
Thank you, sir. That's it for me.
Joe? Stacy? Pam?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Parks and Rec and Dunwoody PD for an excellent holiday showing at Brook Run. That, that was just fascinating. That was amazing. And I know lots of citizens loved it. Thank you.
Jim?
Pam just had mine. So there you go. Great event. Thanks to all involved.
He did. He was, he won the costume contest, if there was a costume contest. And, and he wore it all night, which made him a double trooper. So I want to remind the residents that COVID is still spreading in our community. Georgia is doing better than the rest of the nation, but DeKalb County for a reason I cannot explain, has become one of the worst performing or has the most cases in metro Atlanta, which is the first time that's happened since the pandemic began, since I've been tracking it. And so wear your mask, wash your hands, avoid large gatherings, especially inside. I like to say data doesn't care about your feelings because it's data. And so the way we get through this is by trying to slow the spread. And it helps our businesses too, when people are confident enough to come in and shop. Ditto on the Halloween. Thanks. And thank you all. And I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Move by Jim. I know y'all want to go home. Second by Pam. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.